This meeting of the Lake Mills City Council to order for September 16th, 2025. Ms. Steve, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Koots?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next agenda item is correction and acceptance of the city council meeting minutes from September 2nd. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll accept those into the record. Then we have our board and committee reports. We have the public works board from August 12th and two sets of park board minutes. Any comments from the representatives from those committees or any corrections? Okay, seeing none, we'll accept those into the record as well. So next is our correspondence and constituent contacts. Greg Koots, would you like to start us off tonight?
Yeah. It's a busy couple of weeks. There were several, I got several emails in response to the Sandy, Sandy Park, Sandy Beach Trailer Park with that decision and several reactions on multiple sides of that. Let's see, what else? There was a contact about a reporter change at the, at the paper. Multiple contacts over the course of two weeks about the Milton Street speed limit and the Catlin Drive turn proposal. We had public works board in there, so like contacts last week and this week on both of those. There was a contact about bike lanes by going through downtown. I had a contact from, from Mr. Carr about the, about the development that, that's been, about the rezoning that happened and the upcoming development on there. And a little bit of correspondence back and forth with Mrs. Schmager about the, about the annual evaluations. I think that's about it.
Great, thank you. Mary?
I also had correspondence on ideas for the Sandy Beach food and beverage possibilities. Contact on the parcel off of East Tyranina Road. Also, I received a link to Econo-Wax economic development story and a correspondence on the Bayberry Cottage Inn.
Thank you. Greg Waters?
In addition to those mentioned already, I had a memo on disc golf here in the community of Lake Mills and also about sidewalks. Where the city council decided not to put a sidewalk about a year ago and where a sidewalk looks like has been pulled out by residents, so we're looking into that.
Thank you. Michelle?
I have nothing more to add except to note that this was the most correspondence I have ever had in four years and I loved it.
Great, thank you. I agree. It was a busy couple of weeks since last meeting, lots of correspondence. In addition to what has been mentioned, I attended a meeting with Mr. Mangan and his consultant regarding the planned neighborhood project. I attended a meeting with, regarding the cottage hotel with the developer and city staff. Got a suggestion to install EV chargers in the downtown to support local businesses from visitors and an invitation to a groundbreaking at the elementary school in October. I think everything else I had has already been mentioned. So thank you, everyone. Okay, next we will go to public comment. So individuals who have registered to speak are invited to address the council at this time. State your name and address when you're called on to make your comments. No action will be taken for items not listed in the, on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, so I'll call folks up. We have quite a few who are registered to speak regarding the speed limit topic tonight and we've got our timer over there for the three minutes. So first up is Sarah Clement and then we'll have JB Clark after that.
Hello, my name is Sarah Clement. My family and I live at 116 Milton Street. I just want to thank you all again for all the time and energy you've put into hearing us out and collaborating with us on potential solutions to address the speeding that does happen on Milton Street. I want to express my support for ordinance 1280, lowering the speed limit on Milton Street specifically to 15 miles per hour. I just want to remind everyone that during that short speed study that was collected on Milton Street, multiple drivers were clocked in excess of 40 miles per hour, which is quite a high speed on a one-block length of street, a residential street at that with a lot of children and vulnerable pedestrians in nine out of 10 houses on our street. We are unique in that we are the main thoroughfare between both high schools in town in the morning and at lunchtime and at dismissal in the afternoon. So three times a day, we have a lot of traffic. Most of that traffic is made up of young, inexperienced, impulsive drivers. And I also want to just remind everyone that a vehicle traveling at 40 miles per hour takes 305 feet to come to a complete stop. Pedestrians hit at this speed have a 73% likelihood of fatality or severe injury. A vehicle traveling at 20 miles per hour still takes 115 feet to come to a complete stop. With a speed lowered at 15 miles per hour, the distance necessary to come to a complete stop in the event of a vulnerable or unexpected pedestrian in the path of the driver drops to only 44 feet and the likelihood of fatality or severe injury drops below 13%. So I know it doesn't seem like a big deal to drop it down to 15, but it really does make a big difference in the safety of the people living on our street and using our street to walk to and from school several times a day. We're really thankful that the public works board has heard us out so well and is working with the city manager to consider making the turnout of Catlin Drive right-left only. We just want to stress that we feel the left-right turnout of Catlin Drive is necessary in addition to the lowered speed limit because the left-right turn only solves the problem of the students leaving the high school at lunchtime and in the afternoons and shooting across the narrow gaps on Main Street. We still need lower speeds traveling in both directions all three times a day. So we just really want to encourage the city council to please vote in favor of lowering the speed limit and to also consider making that left-right turnout of Catlin Drive a permanent solution as well. We feel like these are really low-cost measures that don't place a lot of burden on the city. They don't involve a lot of upkeep and maintenance and we do think that they'll be really effective in solving this problem. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Next is JB Clark and then we'll have Louis Clark after that. Sorry for all the beeps. Oh, whoops. Sorry JB, I'm still getting used to this thing. There you go.
Hello, JB Clark of 122 Milton Street. Tonight, you may vote on whether to reduce the speed limit on Milton Street to 15 miles per hour. If you are considering a vote of no or a motion to strike that line, my neighbors and I would ask you to weigh this. What measurable harm would, would slower traffic cause? Milton Street is a single block long. On this one block, nine out of 10 households include children under 12 and seniors over 65. Nearly half of those households include someone with a disability that increases their risk from speeding drivers. Residents on our street include children with autism, ADHD, and a sensory processing disorder, seniors with reduced mobility, joint instability, severe hearing loss, and blindness. Caregivers on our street are already doing all we can to ensure, to meet their needs and ensure their safety. For children who struggle with impulsivity, reduced attention, and sensory processing, what measurable harm comes from slower traffic? For seniors with reduced mobility, severe hearing impairment, or blindness, what measurable harm comes from slower traffic? Reducing the posted speed limit to 15 miles per hour is a modest request, a low-cost measure that may encourage young, impulsive drivers to adopt safer driving habits while protecting residents and transient pedestrians alike. The cost to drivers is negligible and they too will benefit from driving at a safer speed. They will be less likely to suffer injury themselves and damage to their vehicles and they will be less likely to run the risk of a lifetime of guilt knowing that they injured a vulnerable member of our community or worse, as a consequence of driving at an unsafe speed. Even if only a fraction of drivers slow down, the benefit to vulnerable residents could be life-saving. The residents of Milton Street are unanimous in our support of this measure. So if you plan to vote no, we ask you to please clearly state for us what specific harm from lowering the speed limit could possibly outweigh the safety to our 20 children, our 11 seniors, and our seven neighbors with disabilities living on this single city block. If the, if the implementation of a speed humps is not possible at this time, please grant us this bare minimum of protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next then we have Louis Clark and then Ben Clark. Good toes.
Hello, Louis Clark of 122 Milton Street. I was really scared to speak up at any other city council meetings. And the only reason I'm doing this is because I think our city would really need it. Could you please lower the speed limit? I feel it would keep us safe. Thank you.
Louis? Okay, and next we've got Ben.
Hello, my name is Ben Clark, Louis' brother and JB's dad, or no, son, he's my dad. I would like to lower the speed limit because I think that there's so many kids on the street and also seniors, so a lot of, forgot what it's called, oh yeah, vulnerable road users. And so I think we should make it safe for them and one of those is me and my brother. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next is Anita Martin.
Thank you. We live at 261 Pinnacle Drive in Lake Mills. Speed limits are of a concern on Pinnacle Drive too and I think a while back I came and spoke about that. Recently at a neighborhood picnic over Labor Day, a number of us were talking about the speeds on the street and the fact that now we have even more kids coming into a very small area. Immediately to our side, we have kid, two children, almost three children, soon to be born in October, that will be under five years old. Across the street, I think that little boy is five. And then we have some family coming in with four boys, some of whom are small. So in this small area, we have quite a few children. People are speeding on that road, they're texting on that road. And for reasons that are unclear, both my car and one of our neighbors down the street, our dashboards say 35, but the speed limit is 25. And we don't know why it's saying 35 because the closest speed sign says 25. So I, and we do not have a speed sign on Pinnacle. So I don't know what can be done about that, but we have the same concerns and listening to how long it takes to break really does disturb me. So I'm throwing it out there right now, first of all, to ask if we could look at it and also to remind the residents, no matter what those silly dashboards say, it's 25, okay? Thank you. And then the other thing is, this is a nice opportunity coming up here this weekend, Friday and Saturday, to get rid of hazardous chemicals in your home and also to recycle your tires. So Friday from 3 until 5:30 this week, the 19th, as well as Saturday morning from 8 until 10 at the City of Watertown Street Department, 811 South First Street in Watertown. You can bring your chemicals that you are not using, you can bring your tires. The cost is $10 for a trunk load, $50 for a truck load, and $100 for a truck and trailer load. To register, which they're asking for by the end of the day tomorrow, please call Kim at Jefferson County, 920-674-7430. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Anita. Appreciate you always reminding us of those opportunities. Okay, and our last speaker tonight is Representative Joan Fitzgerald. Oh, and she's got a handout. Thank you so much.
All right, good evening. I am Representative Joan Fitzgerald from the 46th District, which includes Lake Mills. I live in Fort Atkinson. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes tonight, and I brought a handout for you as well, to highlight some of the things that were in the most recent state budget. I always get a lot of questions from city councils and town boards about what's in the budget, so I thought I would just give you a little update. You can see on here, the top part is some of the grant programs that might be of interest to you. The A-RIP and L-RIP programs continuing again at their same dollar amount. The local projects program is continuing from the last biennium as well. If there are questions that the city has about information on those grants or who to contact, how to apply for them, please contact my office. We can certainly help get you information on those. The rest of the sheet here is just some of the other things that are in the state budget, in case you were curious. 1.4 billion for extra revenue for K-12 schools. That's a bit of a kind of mixed bag. That's a lot of special ed reimbursement money. So districts are kind of still figuring out where they fall there with, between general aid and reimbursable, but a good amount for schools. 256 million for UW, 840 million for building projects. We've got a lot of things on our campuses we need. 360 million in the childcare. That is one year of continuation of what we currently have and then some different projects in the second year of the biennium. And there is 1.5 billion in individual tax relief for, that will be on your individual tax returns as far as retiree income and a middle-class tax cut. Things at the bottom, I just want to let you know kind of what's coming up. Things that are of interest to me specifically. I know the Knowles Nelson Program has almost universal support in the state. I was at a program today with Pheasants Forever and Ducks Unlimited and some other groups like that. Every group I speak to would like us to find some funding for that, so we're hoping that will happen. We have some labor bills, K-12 education bills, a whole bunch of stuff coming out. Again, if you have specific questions or concerns about any bills that are or are not being brought up in the state capitol, I certainly welcome any and all of those questions. On the back, one of the other things we get a lot of questions on is how does this compare to what Governor Evers first proposed? So that's just kind of a general look at what you may have heard in the news and what ended up actually in the budget, because those are always very two different things once all the compromises come in there. My number and my email are on here. Please contact my office. We're here to help, we're here to answer questions. Contact me if there's ever anything I can do for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Fitzgerald. Appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening. Okay, so that is the end of public comment for this evening. So our next agenda item is the city manager's report and we have quite a few documents attached this evening. Drake, is there anything that you want to touch on or highlight?
Main focus was the development of the, finalization of the budget and then the budget memo that's in front of you. So if there's any questions that you have of any of the documents in there, please let me know.
Were there any questions for Drake on any of the financial documents or reports that we have this evening? Great.
I have a question on the police department report. I saw that we had two staff members leave us in the month of August and I see the chief is here tonight, but was wondering if we could get an update on staffing.
Generally or police specifically?
Police specifically.
Okay.
Um, we recently completed the recruitment for one position, lateral transfer from another department within Dane County. I believe we're still actively recruiting or beginning the recruitment process for another position. As far as the departures, one went to another agency and the other left the policing profession.
So we're currently looking then?
Uh, one.
For one position?
One patrol officer position.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.
Any other questions for Drake this evening? We did get your budget memo handout. We'll talk about that later on the agenda. Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll move on to council business. So the first item under council business tonight on letter A is a discussion and possible action on extension of the development agreement by and between Barry G. Luce and Tom A. Boyk's revocable trust and the City of Lake Mills for the redevelopment of the Bayberry Cottage Inn. So Drake, maybe you could just summarize why this is on the agenda? And then I know the developer is here as well and would like to speak.
As the council likely knows, the development agreement was executed somewhere around 18 months ago for the redevelopment of this location into what will, would be a nine-unit apartment building within the Bayberry slash Cottage Hotel slash Inn. We recently sat down with the owner, Mr. Barry Luce, to discuss the upcoming deadline of the development agreement, which is October 1st. The project will not be completed by that date. At that meeting, Troy and I, as well as Ms. Curler, reiterated the need for him to bring a schedule for if an extension was granted, how he would bring the project to completion and also to be present tonight to answer any questions of the, of the city council. And so the developer requested to be on the agenda tonight as they did not want to authorize any more work or expend any additional funds without knowing if the development would not be able to go forward after the expiration of the agreement. So with the deadline coming October 1 and the council meeting being after that in October, it was requested to be on the agenda tonight in order to be considered for an extension and have some certainty surrounding the future of that agreement and the ability to continue on the project.
Thank you. So Mr. Luce, would you like to step forward? And any representatives that you brought with you and let us know your, your proposal? And have a note that you've handed out a timeline that all the council members have received and I think staff has received as well.
I'm Barry Luce, 406 Mulberry Street. I'm here to, as they said, to ask for an extension of the development agreement for six months. For various reasons that we didn't complete it on a timely manner like we had hoped to, but we did accomplish quite a bit. If any of you noticed, it has all new siding, 100 new windows. So, and we've got plumbing all roughed in, we've got the electric roughed in, the HVAC is roughed in. So we're getting close and I gave you a timeline so that you could have an idea what we plan on doing. You want to say something?
Well, I think that what Barry has prepared here in terms of the ideas and the timeline for everything is fairly self-explanatory, hopefully. But I think the, the major emphasis, at least for the next two months, besides finishing up the things that are roughed in on the inside, is to totally get the outside completed. So by the time the weather turns, they can go back to the inside, finish the drywalling and the kitchens and all of that stuff, so. But the biggest effort right now will be on the outside, addressing both the front and the back of the building. I think you've probably all seen how the sides look really nice with the new windows and everything else. But the front, as good as it sort of looks, needs a fair amount yet and we feel pretty confident that that can be accomplished within the next six weeks. So that's, that's where you'll see most of the effort now, front and back. But the contracting on the inside is pretty much done, with the exception of the electrical. There's more to do because some of that has to do with where the kitchen layout will be. So to finalize the electrical, that'll probably take place, I'm going to guess, in about four to six weeks. And once that's done, I think that the drywall, insulation, and painting can all go pretty quickly. Those are not the things that you necessarily see when you drive by. But I think what you're going to see going by prior to winter is going to be pretty significant. Questions?
And I'm sorry, Tom, I forgot to have you introduce yourself just for the record.
Oh, Tom Vince, I live in the town of Lake Mills, N6789 Sunset Road. And I guess I'm going to kind of be wearing the hat of the go-between project manager along with Jim Wyder possibility, if I'm not available. But the really, I think the role that we're going to try to do is to really be eyes on as well as, not so much hands-on, but eyes on with lots of communications with what's going on. Because it seems like, you know, with Barry, that's been part of the problem with the health consequences of Tom's cancer and all that. A little less available and dependable, so that's the slot I'm trying to help him fill.
Thank you. So do council members have any questions for Barry at this time?
I have a question.
Mary, go ahead.
So Tom, so I'm hearing you say that you're going to take on kind of being the project manager
Yes.
for the duration of the next six months, so this is a pretty high level.
You know, I think what happens so many times is the breakdown in communications between some of the contractors involved, although that's probably not right to say. I think when there is communication, more gets done. And that's the role I'm hoping to help Barry with, to communicate better, to, we pull the trigger at the right time to get the people moving on. But, you know, on the inside, it really, from the roughing in prospect, or aspects, it looks pretty good right now. But they, they can't get everything done, obviously, you know, to do the drywalling and that. But we know, again, concentration right now, outside, exterior, get it done. And that way, when the weather turns, everything should be ready to go for the drywall at that point in time. So I, I think the timeline is fairly realistic in what Barry's presented here. I think it can be well, well, on its way six months from now. So hopefully we'll be ready for occupancy at that time.
Do you think the contractor that you have hired has the bandwidth to complete the volume of work in this amount of timeframe, given what's left?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Great.
One of the reasons for the timeline that was laid out was the disruption to the neighbors and being able to complete the project in a, in a quick fashion. I agree that a lot of good things have happened to the building since the project has started. It's not as quick as everybody would like, but the windows look nice and from the exterior, you can see definitely improvements are being made. I would be lenient to go with a six-month extension, but not past that. So I think it's very important that, that the project gets completed. It's good for the community, it's good for the neighborhood, it's good for your financial side as well.
Right.
So I think it's very urgent that, that you, you with the contractors and let them know the game plan is this thing has to be done April 1st.
Yeah.
That's just, that's, that's a red line, so.
I think financially, that's certainly the target that, you know, I think would like to have it done by now. Because obviously, a completed building in today's rental market is a, is a demand for rentals and so it's a mutually achievable idea, I guess.
Does that seem reasonable, Barry?
Yeah, I put the timeline together.
Okay.
And then talk to the contractors and make sure that they were in agreement with me.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
I'm going to back up what Greg was saying, but also agree with you, Tom, that having that communication is essential.
Absolutely.
And bridging the communication gap that's been happening for several years is a very important piece of it. So if, I would say, if there is any hiccups or problems to reach out to the building inspector we have, because I think it's important that that communication is very, very, that you're on top, that everyone's on top of it, only because I agree that a hard line needs to be had, and I'm understanding if something comes up. But I really believe that if we don't have that hard line, that this is going to continue, and I just don't, I want this for you, Barry, I want this to be done for you.
I want it to be done, too.
I know.
I mean, I'm well past retirement age. When this is done, you'll see no more projects coming before you.
Yeah, well, I saw you just sold the theater, so congratulations on that. But I agree, I think this for you is going to be better for your health, but also it's going to help the City of Lake Mills overall. And I believe that that building is going to look and be a place that will, be somewhere that people want to go and see, because it is a relic.
Yeah.
So I look forward to seeing it finished.
I think it'll be a nice asset for the city.
Greg Koots?
Sorry, yeah. I agree with what my fellow council members have been voicing. I do have some concerns, because we're talking about how important communication is, and what was said at the podium already doesn't match with the timeline that we were given in at least two spots. The electrical is on the timeline as being done by end of month, and then it was described as being four to six weeks. There was talk of extensive exterior work into the front, but the only exterior work that's listed on the timeline for the front is rebuild front banisters. I don't know if, that, maybe I was not interpreting that correctly, that could be on me, but I would just agree with the concern that this does need to get done and to make sure to stay on top of things.
I have actually some comments and questions that also, I think, kind of follow up on what Greg Koots was asking. There are a few items that I'm aware of, and I will ask staff if they would comment as well, that are part of the plans and part of the required development project that I don't see listed here. So the water main, I mean, I see contact, a contractor about the water main, but I don't see when the water main work is scheduled or tentatively scheduled to be done. All the parking, you know, driveway, parking area in the back, the stormwater basin, which I'm assuming there would be some earthmoving involved with that. I'm not clear on when those elements of the project are needing to be done and/or where they're going to be slotted in, and I'm assuming some of those would need to be done before the frost is in the ground, so they're pretty time-sensitive. And again, I'll, I may ask staff to comment if there's anything else that they're aware of that's missing, but I wonder if you could maybe talk about some of those? Are there some things that still need to be plugged in here?
The water main is one of the main reasons I asked to get pushed ahead. I've been talking to Jason Forrest, and he's ready to go on it, but it's a major expense.
Can you move closer to the mic?
Yeah, can you move closer to the mic, Barry? Just want to make sure we can hear you.
Yeah, it's a major expense, and I didn't want to, you know, start that part of the project and then be turned down in front of you. So that's one of the main reasons I did that. And as far as the parking, there'll be parking in the back.
But I think though, I'm not sure if I understood you, Lisa, totally in the sense that, I think that the parking and all that will come after the building is completed. The water part will have to obviously be done to bring it in. But it just, it would make more sense to put all the efforts on getting the building done in front and back now, and then you move inside during the cold months, and then probably in the spring is when we'd be looking at the road. Is that what you were thinking? Does that clear that up?
Well, I was mostly commenting that I didn't see it on the schedule, so I wasn't sure. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that that's work that needs to occur. I wonder, at this point, if I could ask Troy or Drake if you've had a chance to look at this timeline and are there any things that you would note that maybe aren't accounted for or that we would need to address?
No, I think everything on there is a realistic timeframe. You hit it right on the head, the exterior civil work that we talked about in our meeting wasn't really addressed on here. But we did talk about it, and they do know that that's going to be part of the completion is full parking, full stormwater retention. So I do agree that maybe there'll be time in March or before April to get some of that done. I did say that I would give them temp occupancy contingent on getting that hard-surfaced when the weather turned a little bit nicer this spring, so it's all right there. I think it's just a matter of execution now.
And so the development agreement talks about achieving occupancy, I forget the exact phrasing, but it's sort of like, it doesn't have to be like 100% complete, but it has to be largely.
Yeah, substantial completion. So for me to give occupancy, we would have to have, you know, all the life and safety stuff in place, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC functioning, egressing, the back porch deck area that he's talking about finishing. So it'll be, it'll be really close, you know, if we have to leave a couple of them unoccupied, or, you know, without occupancy, it's probably going to be finish work, trim, installing toilets and sinks and bathrooms, you know, fixtures are usually the final items that go in there that I think we could live with, but I think substantial completion should be that March timeline, so we can finish up.
Thank you. And I guess another question I would have for staff is, what is this, I don't know what the right terminology is, but what is the status of the building right now in terms of like a safety designation? What is the terminology there?
The building would be considered a no-go right now for like a fire safety, for fire safety purposes, and it would continue to be such until there was at least kind of separation between rooms and floors. And so at this point, it would be, if there was a fire event, it would be a defensive fire action, prevent the property surrounding it, but they likely would not engage in offensive fire fighting strategies. It would stop, it would cease to be a no-go once there's separation, certainly once sprinklers are in and the sprinklers are active. But for the purposes of today, we wouldn't, we would not enter barring knowledge that a rescue needs to take place.
So you mentioned sprinkler system, would that also include, I mean, things like drywall, those kinds of things? So looking at this schedule, that looks like.
Yeah, separation between floors is a big one.
Okay.
Because right now, there would be nothing stopping a fire from spreading.
Mr. Luce, when would you expect those types, those aspects of the work to be done? In other words, so when would the building be in a safer condition?
I'm having a hard time hearing what you said.
So Mr. Daly was mentioning some things that would be important for fire safety, would be getting the sprinklers in and getting separation between the floors. So when would you expect those parts of the project?
First, the roughing plumbing is done, the HVAC roughed in is done, the electrical comes in and gets done in the next few weeks. Then after that, the sprinkler system comes in. After that, we start the drywall.
Okay, and I see the drywall is scheduled for December, so it sounds like that probably would be till the end of this year before the building would really be in a safer condition, Drake. From his handout, would that match your understanding?
The sprinkler system wouldn't be active until occupancy, usually.
So it, so there's a public safety issue really until it gets very close to occupancy, then, from what you're saying?
Well, there will be, the separation between floors would certainly slow fire spread. We, is, it's probably, it's no more of a threat than it likely has been for years, other than that it's been gutted, and so it would go, it would go faster, certainly right now. So it is a consideration, but it is also a consideration of any redevelopment project that would occur on an existing building. And so the fire department is aware of the condition of the building, they'll manage it as they need to, and so they will, they will perform as they need to, to preserve life and property in the event that something happens.
And one of the water, we're bringing the water main to the fire hydrant, we're putting on the property, too.
Right, right, I recall that. And one of the reasons I'm exploring this particular part of the project is I just, you know, it's a public safety issue, and there's, that, to me, presents some urgency, and so I want to make sure that there's proper urgency, you know, applied to completing this project. And I guess, as long as I've got the mic, I think I would, I listened back to the meeting from a year and a half ago, when the council approved this project, and I said at that time, and I continue to believe today, that I think this project represents a lot of positives for our community, and I appreciate, Barry, you wanting to move this forward. It preserves an important, you know, historic building, close to our downtown, provides apartments close to our downtown, which will be an asset, we certainly need more housing, and there are some other, you know, benefits, such as secondary access for fire department and stormwater management that are also a part of it. Having said that, you know, it has been a long time, as Michelle mentioned, it's, you know, that it's been in disrepair, and while you've made progress, I think, I was hoping, you know, that it would move more quickly than this. I guess one more question I would have for you, Barry is, are you planning to hire a general or a contractor that will be able to oversee the remaining, or the six months that you're asking for?
That I'm getting Tom Vince for.
You're asking Tom Vince to play that role?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. In an official capacity or sort of unofficial?
They're official.
Well, I guess we just want to make sure we know who, you know, who staff should be in touch with and who's kind of taking the lead on implementing this, so. Are there any other questions or comments from council members?
I have a question.
Mary?
So I noticed a big improvement on the cleanliness from the last set of pictures to this time, so thank you, Barry, for addressing that concern that had been brought forward. I'm curious, Tom, are you expecting or planning to be on the premise every day that there's work going on, like you would when you, if you were building your own home, checking on the progress? Or are you planning to project manage from afar? And the reason I'm asking is, Barry knows, he and I talked quite a few weeks ago, that my level of confidence was very low, and I had shared with Barry that I did not intend to support an extension, but talked about things that might give me confidence, and one of them is having someone who, because it hasn't been Barry's area of expertise to manage it the way I think a general contractor or someone who is working on a development would manage it. It's, you know, it's not only seeing, it's seeing it, it's like the look and see model. And so I'm curious, your level of commitment regarding this project management role, I really would like to understand that more, because that would make a big difference on where I stand with my support.
Yeah. Well, if I got all of that, because my hearing isn't very good, I think the way I approach this thing is in trying to help Barry like I've done for years, in a sense, but I just tried to light the fire that it has to be a lot more communication. And what I've been doing the last several weeks is basically being on-site, not all the time, but I want to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing at the start of the day, and I usually am there sometimes during the day and sometimes later in the day. Now, that's not going to be the same every day, okay? But I really believe the idea about not only, you know, being able to communicate with the players, but being there and visually to see what's happening, but it's going to be on that basis, in and out, in and out, in and out, which I think is not a bad way to have it. When I've had others in other projects that I've been involved in, sometimes it's more hands-on, but I just try to be there frequently so people know what's expected, and it kind of instills that timeframe. And I think that's, again, what we've talked a lot about lately, is the timeframe. You know, you have to get this done in this period of time. You know, cleaning up around the property a couple of weeks ago, that was like, come on, it's got to get done, you know? And I think it's, it's not that it's bad, but it's like, people kind of get into the idea, you betcha, and it looks better. I think everybody takes a little bit more pride in the way things look. Inside looks pretty doggone good. You can see everything, you know where the stuff is. A few weeks ago, it wasn't quite that way, and I understand that, too. But it's, those are the kind of things that I hope to help Barry with and to bring this thing to completion, because I want it done as much as he wants it done.
Thanks.
Greg Koots?
Yeah, I have a question more for staff. If, if we do not extend the development agreement now, or for that matter, if we do and it's not finished several months from now, when the extension is up, what is the alternative that we're looking at then? Where does it, where does it leave everything?
In the event that, there are existing defaults under the development agreement right now. The appropriate step would be a stop-work order, which we're up against the deadline anyway, and then following up with a raise order to the property. And then going through that process, he has the ability to petition for a hearing prior to any action there, and we'd have a hearing at Circuit Court, and they'd determine whether or not we could follow through on that raise order and the effect of the property after that. I think that's most likely. There have been different negotiations through time, there has been at least one previous raise order on the property. It's been vacant since 2019, based on an order to vacate the property because of the disrepair and the non-compliance issues that were there at that point in time. So we'd re-initiate that process. Yep.
And I have a follow-up to that, thanks for bringing that up, Greg. And maybe, this is just to restate what was shared 18 months ago when we talked about this. My understanding is, so the rezone of the property is in place, the project has been approved, and if there was, for any reason, Mr. Luce was no longer able to complete it, the property could be sold and someone else could complete the project, is that?
That would, that would take further action. You'd have to, the PDD overlay that's currently applied to the property, it's R-312 with the PDD overlay, planned development district overlay, that was the zoning change from the previous standard. That would require the council to authorize a transfer of that agreement, or, or at the point, because we're under default right now, you can literally yank that designation, you are no longer in compliance with the PDD overlay. He needs the PDD overlay to build it out in accordance with his specifications and plans that were approved by the city council and drafted into the development agreement. So absent that PDD overlay, he cannot build what is desired and what has been planned for, what has been agreed upon in the development agreement.
Okay, thank you for that. And again, though, I guess I just, it would be possible for someone else to pick up the project, to acquire the property.
Would have to, the council would have to.
There would be some steps that would have to.
Council would have to take action to amend the development agreement, accept the designation to a new party, as well as set a new timeline.
Okay.
And then whether or not they would have to re-go through the PDD overlay process, we would probably have to examine, depending on how much time passed compared to the initial approval, and if they were planning to do the same build-out plan or something different, we would have to know exactly what that new party was planning to do if that were, what was before us.
Okay, thank you. Michelle?
According to the final page of the development agreement, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, so please correct me if I am, it appears that the final date is November 17th, 2025. Is that correct?
No, completion date is listed in, I'll pull the exact section. It's in the default section under section. in the default section, um, under section five, page nine. Um, the project schedule shall include site and grading work initiated and completed during spring of twenty twenty-four. Building permit shall be pulled April first. The next paragraph is substantial completion and occupancy by October first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. I was, um, I was getting confused. Um, so you had mentioned, uh, Barry, that you needed six months? But I'm noticing that according to your schedule here, it looks like, hmm, November, December, January, February, March, that's like four. So I'm wondering if the, the other two months, you've not really, um, you don't really need them? Or when?
I need every day.
Well, that's what I needed clarification of, because according to your schedule here, there's nothing in March of twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
We would anticipate the civil work would need to be done in that period of time.
Okay. Well, going by the schedule.
Right.
Um, so that's all I was, uh, gonna comment on, because I was, I was worried that we, our math wasn't mathing. So thank you.
Any other questions from council members for Mr. Lewis? Or questions for staff? Okay, so this is on our agenda for discussion and possible action. So I think the options available to us would be, uh, could include, um, a motion to extend the development agreement to a date certain, a motion to extend the development agreement to a date certain with some additional conditions, um, or no action. And I don't mean to cut off discussion, but just wanted to see if people were prepared to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the developer's agreement for redeveloping of two sixty-five South Main Street to a completion date of April first. Does that work, Mr. Trecher?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would say.
Amending the specific clause, which I just cited on.
You said section five. I didn't get the whole.
Yeah, it's, you can, yeah. Um.
Page nine.
So it would be section five, sub A, sub four, um, probably sub three, and then extend the completion date to April first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Waters to amend, uh, extend the developer's agreement by amending it to a date of, uh, April first, twenty twenty-six?
Mr. Koots will second the motion?
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Do we need to provide any conditions to that? Or will the develop-, the developmental, sorry, will the developer's, um, agreement stand and hold true at, uh, April first?
It's based on the current, uh, developer's agreement.
All of the requirements within that agreement, except for the deadline, may, will be, remain in force.
Okay.
Which will, the deadline will have changed. So, um, anything that you see listed in the development agreement is a burden, obligation, or responsibility of the developer will remain in force until April first, which at such a time would either result in substantial completion of the project or, uh, a default of the agreement.
I would just like to note that the city council will not be meeting until the seventh of April. I wonder if that is something we need to take into consideration with also the fact that in March, there is, um, there may be some folks on city staff who decide to take spring break. I'm not sure if that's a thing, but I'm an educator, so that works for me. But, um, thinking, uh, thinking in that timeline, are we going to be seeing, um, more reports of this particular project? And if so, are we going to be able to provide enough notice if things are not going the way that we think they should?
He'll have his rights under the development agreement until that April first date. The council doesn't necessarily after April first have to, this body have to take action in order to issue a stop work order or ho-, or hold someone in default. Administratively, we can enforce an agreement that's been, um, approved and executed by, um, by the city. So, um, we don't need to change the date to a city council meeting date. Um, if we were, if there were to be a default, there would be subsequent action this council would have to take. But the, the deadline of April first will not conflict with the scheduling that and taking such action.
Okay.
We as staff will be able to hold, um, take action in the event of a default.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle, I really appreciate you bringing that up, because I've been thinking about that as well, that I don't want there to be a lack of communication during six months. And then we're, here we are at this, close to this deadline again, and, you know, potentially still having a problem. Um, I would like to, uh, propose an amendment to the motion. And Dan, you can let me know if this goes in the developer's agreement or just on the record, um, that the developer report, uh, give a progress report to the city council, the first meeting in December of twenty twenty-five and the first meeting of February of twenty twenty-six. So those would be essentially sort of two-month increments, um, so that we can be aware of the, uh, progress.
I, I think you, you could add that to the development agreement. I don't think it's necessary by any means. Um, you, you as the council have the ability to state that in the motion. Um, if he doesn't show up on that date, I don't know that you can compel him absent some kind of police power or authority. But if he's interested in completing the project, he, he should show up. So I think your motion would be effective there.
And, and before I ask for a second, Barry, would you have a, a problem with that? Basically, every two months, when we have a city council meeting, you or your representative would come and give a progress report? Okay. 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 Uh, so that's my, um, uh, motion to amend.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion to amend by Ms. Curler, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Any discussion on that motion for every two months progress reports? Okay, Misty, would you call a roll call, call the roll on the motion to amend?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so we have, um, motion, um, and a second to extend the developer's agreement to April first of twenty twenty-six and revise appropriate sections to reflect that. Um, and then, uh, I guess a, a statement from the city council with the amendment that we are asking the developer to come, uh, at the beginning of December and beginning of February to report the progress. Is there any further discussion on this overall? Uh, I, I just have one comment I'd like to make. Barry, um, appreciate you being here. You know, you've done so much for the community in terms of historic preservation. I know you want to see this project completed. The council wants to see this project completed. And so I, I'm, um, optimistic that, um, you'll be able to follow through. Um, so I thank you for, um, continuing to work with us and continuing to do this. I, uh, to Michelle, Michelle's point earlier, um, if you can get it done in less than six months, that would be great. So don't feel like you need to use the whole six months. Please keep it moving. Uh, the neighbors are, you know, paying attention and, and everyone's paying attention and wanting this project to be successful. Okay, any other comments or thoughts? Okay, then, Misty, can we have a roll call vote, please, on the motion to amend the developer's agreement?
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is a presentation on the draft wastewater treatment plant facilities plan. Drake, do you want to kick it off or turn it right over to consulting engineer?
I would turn it right over to Travis. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Travis Anderson with Strand Associates. I'm joined tonight by Evan Hunsinger from Strand, who has helped author the draft facilities plan that was in your packets tonight. So our, uh, if we can progress to the agenda, please. Our, uh, our agenda tonight is to give an overview of the draft facilities plan, talk a little bit about the, the facility planning process, and review the needs of the treatment plant, uh, to achieve compliance with state statutes and to continue to safely operate the plant. Uh, so we'll talk about the phased project that is recommended in the facility plan, go over project funding and sewer rates, and talk about next steps. Uh, and just to kind of frame the discussion tonight, um, th- this dra-, this facility plan is still draft. It has not been sent to DNR yet. So what we are, are wanting to do is get any, any feedback or revisions to, to the plan that might be necessary before we send it to DNR. Uh, so, you know, moving forward, we would incorporate any CD, city feedback. We would send the, the plan to DNR for review. And then we would want to schedule a public hearing. That is a requirement, uh, from DNR that we do that. But, uh, we just want to make sure that we're incorporating city, uh, feedback before that happens. Um, so, uh, we'll certainly have time for any, any questions and answers after, after we get through this, this overview. And I know a lot of this, um, we've, we've talked about in previous meetings over the years. So we'll, we'll try to keep this at a high level. But certainly, if you have any detailed questions, feel free to interrupt us along the way, um, or, or we can save questions for the end. So with that, um, I'm gonna have Evan come up and, uh, uh, just start with the overview and talk about some of the, some of the needs that the treatment plan is facing.
Thanks, Travis. Um, I think this slide here, the overview is, is kind of the, the why of the why of the project. Um, this plan has served you well since nineteen ninety-one, so it's coming up on thirty-five years old. Um, so the existing plant infrastructure is aging, like Travis mentioned. Um, to comply with code, there's some treatment capacity limitations. There's also newer rules from WDNR that, um, Wisconsin DNR that, um, requires lower phosphorus discharge, um, out of the plant. And, um, with growth in the city, there's future increased flows and loads to the plant, as well as some concerns over, um, liquid sludge storage capacity and application of that, um, sludge onto farmland. So, uh, review of the facilities planning process, it's essentially four parts. Um, first is what you have. So an evaluation of your existing collection system, the existing plant's performance. Um, and then the next section is what you need. So it goes into, um, projecting future flows and loads, future regulatory requirements from Wisconsin, uh, DNR, and then just age and condition of different pieces of equipment and processes at the, at the plant. Next would be, how do we, how do we get there? Um, and that's evaluating different alternatives at the plant, um, coming with low-cost alternatives to, um, meet code and to update, um, aging equipment. And then the final part is the recommended plan, um, where we come up with a implementation schedule for these improvements, um, and discuss environmental impacts of these improvements. So the first review of needs is, is capacity. Um, all these issues are also code-related. Um, so a replacement of the screening equipment and influent pumps, which are required due to increased future peak flows, um, with future growth within the city. An additional final clarifier, um, that also is caused by those increases in, in peak hourly flow to the plant. And then within the planning period, which is twenty years required by the Department of Natural Resources, is, um, an expansion of the liquid sludge storage to, um, meet the code requirement of a hundred and eighty days of, of storage per year. And then the other review of needs are, uh, more on the age and condition of the plant. So most processes and equipment at the plant are original to the nineteen ninety-one construction, coming up on thirty-five years. Um, this is past the, the typical twenty-year lifespan that you would expect for these pieces of equipment. Um, the oxidation ditch aerators require replacement. Final clarifier equipment is, is original and requires rehabilitation or, or replacement. Um, an upgrade of the disinfection system to ultra-villet disinfection, which is, um, much safer than the glass, the gas chlorination system that's currently at, um, the treatment plant site, as well as numerous across the plant, um, that are aging and need replacement. And then a recommendation of a separate building to relocate personnel away from, um, the sludge thickening process that, that currently happens in the same main building that, um, employees' offices are located in, to address health and safety, um, some other inadequacies of the facility, and, um, storage of rather expensive equipment that is currently stored outside, um, rather than indoors. And then, um, just some general HVAC and electrical equipment throughout the plant that are at the end of their useful life and, and ready for replacement. The next item is review of needs for future regulatory limits. So as I, as I previously mentioned, there's upcoming phosphorus limits. Um, the plant is currently complying through the use of the multi-discharger variants. Um, the city will need to reply, uh, reapply for this in, in twenty twenty-six. Um, DNR is proposing to re-, renew the, um, multi-discharger variants, uh, legislature through twenty thirty-seven. Um, however, there may be at some point that the plant needs to implement, um, filtration, which would be another process at the plant to remove this, this additional phosphorus. Um, alternatively, the plant could discharge to the Crawfish River rather than Rock Creek. Um, but this would require, um, the construction of effluent pumping to get the flow, um, to this alternate discharge point. And then, uh, sludge handling, um, and beneficial reuse standards are subject to change. So we have, um, emerging contaminants like PFAS and other regulatory issues that may, um, come up over, uh, the next ten to twenty years, which is the, the planning periods over twenty years, that may shift things, um, in a different direction.
Evan, can I interrupt you there?
Yeah.
Just that last point. Um, and I certainly, I think we all probably read a lot about PFAS and.
Turn your microphone.
Sorry. Um, regarding your last, uh, point on that previous slide, the, um, we all read a lot, I think, about PFAS. But, um, are, are you saying within the twenty-year planning horizon, you're just anticipating that there may, may be some new standards that we would have to meet and that would affect the where we could dispose of sludge or?
Yes, so, um, DNR is implementing standards for, um, PFAS. They haven't released final, um, issuance on, on that yet. Um, but it is certainly possible that within the, the twenty-year period, um, there, there could be some regulatory limits on, on PFAS. And I think that's, sort of leads in the next slide here, actually. Um, we're taking a phased approach to the project. So the, the first phase here, um, would not touch any sort of that, that bio-solids side. So as, um, DNR rolls out, um, rules and regulations on PFAS, um, an appropriate action could be taken at that time to address these codes. Hopefully that, that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
And phase one's estimated to last the city and for how many years until phase, where you estimate phase two would need to take place?
About ten years. Um, but everything, everything that we would touch for phase one would last the full twenty-year planning period. Um, but in about ten years, the, the other items that we're talking about in phase two, um, would, would be implemented. So phase one would consist of, um, upgrades to the influent pump and screening, um, new final clarifier, upgrades to the oxidation ditches, um, upgrading the recycled, um, activated sludge pumps, the RAS pumps, um, an administration building, um, as well as UV disinfection and post-uration. And then, um, as I discussed, phase two would, um, incorporate sludge storage and then, um, possible implementation of either influ-, effluent pump station or, um, filtration, clotus filtration to address the phosphorus. the phosphorus compliance. So we have the costs here for Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 costs are $28,600,000 for those items I had just discussed before. And then Phase 2 costs, based on preliminary discussions, at about $16 million.
Just could you please clarify, if this is Phase 1, which was alternative 1, that goes to Rock Creek without any of the AGS? I didn't see the specific definition of what the phase included in the deck. I was in that long paper, that's 177 pages, and I want to make sure, since this is the, this is like the review materials, if you could, what are we talking about that is 28.6?
Yeah, good, I mean, good point, because we've talked about a lot of alternatives over the last couple of years. So this, what we're showing here is the option of upgrading the existing plant and continuing to discharge to Rock Creek. Now, we can, we don't have to make the decision on discharging to the Crawfish now. That would be a decision that could be made in the Phase 2 timeframe, depending on how regulations change. So the item there in Phase 2 for new tertiary filtration, that is the Rock Creek cost to stay discharging to the Rock Creek. Now, if the city decides it's more advantageous in the future to discharge to the Crawfish River, you wouldn't install that tertiary filtration system. You would instead install that force main to get to the Crawfish River. But for right now, we're using the Rock Creek costs just for reference, for budgeting purposes in the future.
Thank you.
And maybe just a follow-up question to that. So the, this plan is based on some assumptions in terms of city growth. And so does Phase 1, other than upgrading infrastructure, does it address a certain amount of capacity increase? And then Phase 2 would continue that, but also address the pollutant treatment?
So Phase 1 would address the growth all the way through the 20-year.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So everything implemented in Phase 1 would last through the 20-year planning period.
Okay, thank you.
Just to remind the council, the DNR actually only allows a 20-year planning period.
Right.
So you can't, you actually can't present anything outside of that 20-year planning period for approval in the facilities plan.
Correct.
Thanks. Oh, Mary.
Can I ask one more question about costs? I had in my notes back from one of the conversations about this having to do with the city buying land for biosolid management. Is that still a requirement for Phase 1? And no? Okay. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
With that, I'll pass it back to Travis.
Okay, so next slide, please. All right, so like Drake mentioned, the DNR requires a 20-year plan and doesn't let you really submit a plan for anything beyond that. But we do want to make sure that we have a plan for what comes next, because, you know, we will get there eventually. And if the city were to grow faster than the Department of Administration projects, or you were to get a large industry, we want to make sure that you're able to accommodate that growth. And that's what this graphic is showing here. So everything in Phase 1 and Phase 2 is what Evan already discussed. That's the cost that we just looked at. That's the orange and the red. The purple and the blue would be for growth beyond the current 20-year planning period. So we just want to show that there are viable options. That is where the aerobic granular sludge alternative comes into play, because that does have that smaller footprint. So by the time we get to that point, that technology will hopefully be well-established. It'll have a lot of operating facilities, and that would be an alternative that the city could implement because of your tight site constraints that you have in order to continue to meet growth in the future. So, you know, we are kind of reserving that space and that concept for future growth beyond the current projections. So next slide, please. All right, so shifting into project funding, Evan mentioned, Phase 1 that we talked through, capital cost is approximately $28.6 million. We would anticipate the city would pursue a clean water fund loan for this project. Current interest rates for a 20-year clean water fund loan are about 2.5%. DNR does vary that quarterly. It doesn't usually change by a lot, but just so that you're aware of that, obviously it changes with market conditions. So we have performed a rate review based on the phasing approach that we've outlined here. We're taking into account your current expenses, other capital improvement plan projects for the city, and the Phase 1 project. And I just wanted to note to council that as we reviewed the sewer rate projections, we, of course, look at your O&amp;M costs. That's a significant portion of the sewer utilities budget. And the last sewer rate increase that the city adopted was in 2019. And as we know, costs increased dramatically beginning in 2020 with COVID and all the supply chain issues. And they really, I mean, they've slowed down, but costs are up dramatically in the five years compared to any five-year window that you'd look at prior to that. So across the board, of course, all materials and repair costs are up, but some things, you know, in particular to note, chemical costs have increased 50% in that timeframe. Insurance costs up 100%, sludge costs up 100%. So those are dramatic impacts on the sewer utilities budget, considering that the city has not raised rates since 2019, yet they've still been able to accommodate operating the utility. And there isn't a whole lot that can be done about these costs, you know, like chemical costs are just commodities. It's like the price of gas going up. There's nothing really, you know, bill or staff can do about that. And, you know, insurance costs, there's mandated costs. And so, you know, these costs, I think, are here to stay, and we need to accommodate them in our rate review moving forward. Next slide, please. So I've got a few graphics shown here. Over on the right-hand side, we've got a couple of breakdowns in the typical sewer customer monthly bill. So obviously, that varies by how much water you use. And showing a couple of different options in the pie charts there. One would be for a 20-year clean water fund loan. And you are able to get longer than 20-year clean water fund loans. They're approved on a case-by-case basis from the DNR. We have had preliminary discussions with it, and they do agree that it is feasible for the city. So that's why we're showing the 20-year, 29-year loan term option there in the bottom pie chart. So what is breaking down there in green is the current typical sewer monthly bill of $47. And then in the blue is the increase from the increased O&amp;M costs that I just went through on the previous slides, to basically to catch you up to today's costs for operating the utility. And then in yellow, there would be the ultimate increase to implement Phase 1 as we've presented. And with the longer loan term shown in the bottom graph, that increase to the sewer customers would decrease from the $40 to the $31. And options to, I guess, mitigate or help implement this rate increase, besides the longer loan term option, would be to phase in the rates over multiple years. You don't need to do this all in one year, all in one shot. And that's what that bottom table is showing. So 2025 is your current condition, or what, basically what you've had for the past six years. Typical customers paying about $47 a month. And you could ratchet that up over the course of several years, basically through construction of the project, because this project is going to be in construction through 2029. So you don't, while you don't have to implement it all at once, you do have to adopt the rate schedule, so that you've got, you're showing to DNR that you're committed to the project, and you're committed to ultimately getting to where you need to be to cover the loan payments. And just want to point out that you don't have to adopt the rates with the facility plan that we're talking about tonight. But you do have to pass the ordinance prior to the loan application, which would happen, typically happens at the end of the design process, which would be late 2026. So while we want to think about it now, we want to understand the ramifications of the project and have commentary on the facility plan, you don't have to actually adopt the rate increase with the facility plan submitted to DNR.
Travis, this assumes no new customers, correct?
Yes, this assumes, this is just based on your current revenue. So obviously, as the city grows, that provides additional revenue. And you are building this to accommodate all of those new customers, but we can't, you know, we, the DNR's rules are that we have to, we have to basically plan at this point, you know, standing here today, for your current revenue and customer base. Now, maybe that'll look different a year from now. Maybe it'll look different in '27 and '28, and you can adjust those, you can adjust those rates as needed, as long as you're able to provide your debt coverage. You have to have a certain amount of revenue above your costs. That's the debt coverage ratio that I'm mentioning there. So this isn't by any means set in stone, but this is a snapshot of what the picture looks like today.
So this particular page caught my attention. For the last two and a half years, our chart has shown, if we chose to do a phased approach, that we would have 13 years before we doubled the rate. And when we did, it was one of our really important discussions as a city council regarding the impact to the customer, because the new wastewater treatment plant option would have had us double in three years, which this chart is now showing. So can you help me understand how this became the new, it's showing us doubling in three years, how this layout has come forward in lieu of all of the phased rate draft comparisons that we've seen in past years? Because this is concerning to me, because this is not what I believe I was signing up for our citizens to see, to see as a part of, as an impact at this kind of a rate in this chart down here on the left.
When we revisited those costs for the new treatment plant with the inflation that we've seen in the last couple of years, it increased that new treatment plant option to, it was about $80 million. So it was about double the cost of phasing in work at the existing plant. And that pushed the rates to well above doubling. They were, I believe they were going to be around like $140 a month, or, you know, somewhere in that ballpark was the revised rate impact for the increased construction cost due to inflation. What that didn't necessarily take into account was, you know, that was really, that was just looking at the project itself. That wasn't looking at these continued increases in the O&amp;M costs that we've seen in recent years. That's kind of that blue piece, along with the CIP projects that we've now incorporated into this rate increase. So this is really a comprehensive look at, you know, what has happened in the last few years here with increased O&amp;M costs and the other projects that the utility needs to fund outside of just these treatment plant upgrades? Because we've also incorporated the five-year CIP into this table here as well, because there are other sewer collection system projects that the city is trying to implement as, you know, as a part of your CIP. So that, you know, that is why, you know, if we add the yellow and the blue together, we're still getting to roughly doubling the rates.
So but last, nine months ago, this, I would really like to understand this, because I made a decision, part of my decision criteria had to do with the rate impact to our citizens. And just nine months ago, our deck from December of 2024, we had discussed a $19 million Phase 1, and that was even going to the Crawfish. And so taking out the $4.6 million building, because that's a new line item that I would like to have on the discussion table. So it's a $5 million increase, because you take that out and it gets us at, you know, because now we're at 28.6 million, it would have been a 20, if you add 5 million, 24 million. And so it's only a $5 million delta, which is still a 25% change. But I just don't understand how, like, I don't, because maybe I'm not getting the yellow, the colors that you have, and how it equates over to the chart. But the rate change is just really not, I am just trying, I'm struggling with a 13-year, like, nice soft increase for our customers who are using the service to this very rapid one. It just, to me, is, I'm just caught back by it. So I would really, I'd like to understand, I'm not sure this is the time, and I might need a tutorial from someone who can help me understand it. But I am a bit concerned about the rapid increase, because I believe, I had, that is one of my key driving decisions on whether to go just improving versus a whole new system. It had to do with this, this kind of a, an impact not being acceptable, in my opinion.
You would need, so for the chart on the left,
Yeah.
You'd need to back out the $14 out of each of those numbers in order to have an apples-to-apples comparison of the rate comparison that was presented previously. So the $14 rate increase needs to happen whether you do a wastewater treatment plant project or not. And so that, we had not, the strand had not considered the operating and maintenance costs of continuing to manage the sewer utility as it exists today with no project, because of both the capital improvement plan projects that we have, that are in the five-year CIP and have been completed the past two, three years, as well as the increases in the operational costs of that utility. So the chemical purchasing, the hauling of the sludge, employee wages, employee benefits, things of that nature would have to, so you'd have to back that $14 out entirely from that chart on the left to show only what the project that's within the facilities plan is doing to the rates.
But if you still back out 14, it's still going to double in nearly three years instead of 13 years. And it's the, it's the rate by which, we doubled all of our exhibits, 2023, I have 2021, we didn't have some great ones. All of them showed that we start like at $54, and whether it's 54 and you take out 14 and it's 40. Anyway, it, we don't double it until we're in year 2037. And so that's 13 years out. And we were doubling in three years if we were to go with a new wastewater treatment plan, in all of our exhibits. And now we're doubling in three years. So even if I back out $14, we're still doubling really fast. And that's what one of the pros that I believe we spent a lot of time talking about was the impact to the, to the users of the service. And it's, this is really different than anything we've ever looked at regarding the impact. And that's all.
A doubling, well, a doubling of the rates would be $94 a month. So if you back out the 14 from each of those numbers, we won't actually double over that five-year period.
Does it go to 13?
The existing rate is $47 a month. That's what people are paying typically today.
So the change to 2026 just shows the $14. It doesn't include the.
Right. So then, that, so if we didn't, so we have to do that regardless. But if you take out, if you took out the 14 from the 92 or the 101 and just looked at the project, we would never, we would never hit the doubling over this, contributed to the project, the treatment plant upgrade project in this five-year period.
Do, would we hit year 13? Is it material, because it was a three-year, and is it five years, or is it, I'm just trying to make sure that.
I think we'd have to, we'd have to real.
Feeling confident.
We went six years without a rate increase since 2000. We went six years without a rate increase since 2019 to today. That is.
Catch up a little bit.
Yeah, it, you know, if we could go back in time, would we have been increasing rates for a longer period of time, perhaps? If you went six years between when you adopted that $14 rate, dollar rate increase and don't increase at all for anything but the project for operating and maintenance costs again, which again, may not be advisable, it all depends how much costs go up. So we chose, the city chose not to raise rates since 2019, six years. If you repeat that, do you get close to the year 13 before you double? Depends how many projects we do. It depends how many investments we make. It depends how much debt we take out. We've certainly made significant investments in the collection system the last few years, and we have significant plans on the collection system as far as lift stations and other upgrades that we have on the horizon. And so that is certainly contributing to this. I would also anticipate that we likely underestimated the cost of a brand-new construction based on some of the numbers we saw out of Reedsburg.
Yes.
And so that kind of, when we, you know, when I first started, we were talking 55 million, 50 to 55 million for that cost. We're definitely in excess of 80 million and probably more at this point, as Reedsburg is now a year since they opened bids. And they, I believe, were north of 80 million. So I think we'd still are seeing, I think you'll still, if we gamed it out again, we would still see a significant increase in rates when you compared renovating the existing site to purchasing a new site. Certainly, the delays we've experienced, there, it's twofold, right? You delay the costs, people aren't paying for the cost while that decision is being delayed, but the cost of that project continues to increase annually. And so obviously, the decision, I think if you go back, this has probably been talked about for 10 years, if not more, by the city. Had we started, had we started raising rates at the beginning of the conversation about this, there may be, there may be a different conversation happening right now. But also, customers didn't pay those increased rates for those 10 years. And so in some regard, there is a catch-up happening here of why, of when rates that essentially those operating and maintenance costs have been eating into the sewer utilities' operations, and they've made due. But I think if we, if we went back and ran a rate proposal on a brand-new facility, we would see a significant increase over what you see here today for the renovation of the site, because both of those have gone up.
Mary, I really appreciate your line of inquiry here and looking back, you know, at some of the details. And I think maybe a little bit of the confusion is just the title on this slide says project funding, but really what you're looking at is a bigger picture of the sewer utility funding needs, both from catching up on rates to, you know, the CIP investments that we're making, plus this project. So there's kind of three things going into it rather than just the one here. Again, I think you're very right to ask these questions, Mary, and make sure that we're all understanding the full picture of things. Having said that, I don't think I would have made a different decision on whether to build a new plant versus stick at the current site because of those cost impacts. So really, now I think we're just having better information about all of the other financial aspects of the sewer utility that we need to pay attention to.
I would have to delve into the calculation, but if I'm looking at the same presentation, that presentation also does assume a 1% annual growth in sewer customers, in which this, that chart in front of you assumes a 0%. So that will factor into it in some regard.
Yeah, I'm not saying I made the wrong decision. It was just an influencing factor that we had a longer bridge to get to a higher rate versus if we went with the new, which was way too much money. So I, and I'm not surprised it's at 80. I mean, from 2021, the numbers, you can just see, if you go back in history to see what, where things started. I mean, costs have gone up significantly. I just am worried about the transition. And I didn't, this to me looked like, I was hoping maybe you grabbed over the chart from the wrong, from the wrong one. Like, this was from the new model, because this is what the new one looked like. It was kind of quick, and it doubled very quick, and I liked the longer, you know, it was a smaller percent over a longer period of time is all. And so it's just something, it caught my attention. So I, but I do feel we're on the right path, and I don't want to spend any more time than I was kind of wanting to understand it at least.
To let you know that I looked up the average customer monthly cost for communities around us, and it falls between 50 and 80 dollars a month. It does depend, obviously, on many factors, but I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that I want in four years to be spending $101 on my water bill, or my wastewater bill, but, you know, I guess perspective is key.
That's a good perspective, thank you.
Thank you for bringing up that.
I think we should give serious consideration to the 29-year loan, because we do expect the improvements being made to last the length of that. Certainly, the ones, the ones that exist today have lasted for that amount of, for that amount of time. I think that will mitigate some of the impact, as well as allow for more time for additional customers to be brought in to further allay the cost on the existing customer pool that we have. With that being said, there certainly will be investments made over the next 20 years in the collection system as well. And so I think we likely need to visit rates more regularly than every six years, just to avoid significant increases. Again, that's a bit of a policy decision, because as I said, the longer you delay a rate increase, the less people are paying for that period of time. But is a, you know, $5 increase every two years more palatable than, you know, a $15 to $20 increase every five? I think that would be something we'd have to grapple with as far as what would work best for both the operations of the utility as well as the customer.
Great.
Thank you, Mary, for going through that process. I was also shocked when I saw the pricing based on what we talked about nine months ago. Some of the positives was the loan that was outlined, that Mr. Daley just outlined again. That's really nice. Of course, we're past the decision on the phase versus a new construction. I agree with the phase decision that we made. But looking at these costs for the first time and having it broken out like this is really nice. And being able to deduct the CIP off here makes a lot of sense. But I think we need to be good stewards, look at things. That's the first time I've seen the administration building at 4.6 million. So we should, you know, review this and make sure that we're making good decisions for our residents, so.
If Bill is here tonight, if you'd like to talk about some of the deficiencies within the administration, the main impetus of it is the health and safety of employees. Right now, they're in the same, housed in the same building as certain processes that are ongoing within that building. The main drivers are health and safety, like I just mentioned there. There's also only one shower currently in that facility. There are four operators, plus a part-time operator as well, that, you know, that gets daily use. And so that is, that is a concern as well. And then also, the, right now, a significant amount of our storage of wastewater equipment, materials, vehicles is outdoors. And so the administrative building is not only offices, it includes bays and storage areas for the indoor storage of those implements and materials that we require. And so certainly, Bill's available to answer questions as far as, you know, the benefits and how the existing administrative building is working for employees and concerns he has. But those are kind of the main drivers behind why you see the administration building included in the project costs, is health and safety, indoor storage of utility, equipment and vehicles, and then just inadequate facilities for the amount of employees we have now and the operations that are ongoing, that go on in the administration building.
Does anyone have any questions for Bill Keesling? We can have him come to the podium, or would you like to share some thoughts, Bill, on the safety issues?
Questions for me?
I did, I appreciate you highlighting that, Drake, because that's one of the things I thought in Evan's part of the presentation that caught my attention, particularly with the chlorine and some of the other things that are dangerous to work around. And so some upgrades to move away from, from the chlorine base to the UV, I think, is going to be a real positive for our staff.
So I believe this was my last slide besides next steps. So as I mentioned, our next steps would be to submit this plan to DNR to get their feedback and comments. Typically, they have very minimal comments on facility plans. But then we would also want to schedule a public hearing to get any input and comments from the public. And of course, we've got some clarifications from city staff as well to incorporate into the plan. But then at that point, the plan would be finalized, and the next step would be to proceed with design of the project. I do have on here finalized the rate study. That's just kind of to memorialize what was presented tonight to use as a basis for moving forward. I'm not proposing that you would actually adopt the full rate strategy that we talked about here for the reasons that we mentioned, just because, you know, there is city growth that should be factored in as we move forward. And then the timeline that's proposed is to proceed with design in January. So we can circle back to any further questions on the rates or any other questions that you might have had on the facility plan itself to keep the process moving.
So the task order that was approved included submittal of the facilities plan to the DNR. And so, you know, we don't necessarily need action from the council to submit that. It's not final until after the public hearing, and so the council certainly can still change it, you know, up until it's finalized after the public hearing for submittal. If there are things in here that you want to see more information on or changes you want to see to the plan, we would place it on another agenda for, you know, further discussion and action for you rather than submitting to the DNR. And so this is just kind of the presentation to the council on where the decision to go with the renovation, remediation, upgrade of the existing site has led us. And so it's kind of up to the council on if you want to talk about this again on a future meeting, or if we're ready to proceed still under that task order that was approved and submit to the DNR and prepare for the public hearing.
And just to clarify, the public hearing would be held by the council at a future council meeting with do notice of that? So that'd be sometime October, November?
We're planning notice. There's no notice under the, there's no notice required. It's not like some hearings that the DNR, that requires Class I or Class II. We're planning to do notice, but we're not restricted. You know, the notices have to be in the paper a certain amount of time, seven days after. After tonight, we would pretty much submit notice for as many newspapers as we could before the public hearing, which we would target the second meeting in October for. So we would hit as many, you know, newspapers as we could, at least two between now and then. And then we would hold that hearing at the city council meeting, the second meeting in October, which, 21st? I think it's the 21st.
7th, 21st, yep. So two meetings from now. So it sounds like if the council wants to get more information or have more information, have more input into the facility plan, we can ask to have this scheduled at a future meeting. Otherwise, we can ask Strand to go ahead and submit the facility.
And I assume after submittal, if at the public hearing, the council has another discussion and decides to amend, we can amend the facilities plan with the DNR and resubmit it to them following that.
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. So there's technically is another opportunity. Okay. Any other questions, Mary?
I actually thought the information in that draft document was extremely interesting and helpful to understand all of the issues that we're challenged with and things that we could be challenged with. And so on, from the DNR side, I support moving forward. I would like to learn more about the administration building, which I think is not DNR-related, to understand for 4.6 million, what we're getting for that investment, and are there alternatives to understand what that particular investment might look like? But that's not for, I'm certain, like, for a DNR approval. So I would support you moving forward, because I don't think we have a formal, do we need to make, we don't have a motion or resolution or anything we need to do.
No, but we would for that second meeting in October.
Right, right, after the public hearing, we would. Any other comments? I too would support advancing this, submitting it to DNR. On the whole rate, rate increase question, is that something that we anticipate having the Public Works Board start working on soon? I mean, do we, it seems like we have a six-year catch-up to do. Should we do that even independent of?
I think we can, we can move forward with that $14 piece of the pie at any time that we, that we want to move forward. That typical process when we've done rate increases in the past, is we've gone to the Public Works Board, asked them for a recommendation to engage with a consultant to do the rate study, a formal rate study, and develop that plan. Wastewater, you don't need to submit to the PSC, so it's a much quicker process. The council sets those rates under its own authority. And so typically, you know, electric rates, WPPI typically does them, water rates, LERS typically does them, and Strand has typically done them in the past for us on the wastewater side. And so we can certainly go through that process again. They've done a lot of that work already, and so it may expedite it even sooner. But we can certainly place it on the next Public Works Board agenda for them to begin discussing it, if you'd like. We haven't brought treatment plant upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant since the council kind of took it, but the $14, the operating and maintenance portion of it would be just general upkeep of the utility. So we certainly can take that to them.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, do we have to go out for a study, or did we just have that? And that's how we came up with this $14 that we're asking about?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll probably talk to Travis to see how much more work would need to be done, or is it already in such a state that we can simply present the justification for why it's necessary to the Public Works Board and skip directly to a recommendation? I'll have to discuss that to see if it was, if the preliminary analysis is enough to move forward to that, or if the backend work is adequate to bring that forward. It may be the case.
And I, you know, I don't want to be the only one suggesting this, but I'm getting the impression that that would be staff recommendation to go ahead and address the six-year issue, you know, sooner rather than later, so we're catching up on, you know, what our actual costs are. And I think it would be good for that to be, even if it's only a discussion item at the next Public Works Board, and for them to get up to, you know, be in the information loop on the facility plan and that, you know, that's moving forward. Okay, is there anything else, Drake or Travis, that you need from the council this evening?
No, I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Evan. Thank you, Bill, for being here.
Ms. Carler?
Yes.
In light of the fact that there are folks in the audience here who want to see ordinance 1280, his third reading come, not to minimize the strategy update presentation, which I adore, but I, given the time of the evening and that they have bedtimes, I would like to push that forward, if that's all right?
Sure, if there are no objections, we can move item D ahead of item C. Problems with that? Okay. Super. So our next item, then, we will be doing ordinance 1280. So Misty, would you please do the third reading? So, Misty, would you please do the third reading for that?
Ordinance 1280, amended in City of Lake Mills code, section 615-4, speed limits.
Thank you. This is, so this is the third reading, so we will be discussing and taking a vote on this tonight. Would people like to hear anything further from staff or would someone like to make a motion?
I would, sorry, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1280.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Koots, a second from Ms. Schmager. Drake, is there any more information that staff would like to provide on this?
No, if there's questions, we're happy to answer them. I spoke too soon.
No. Okay, if you're going to pass or at some point in the future, there is an error that has persisted in the code in section B, Sub B, regarding the outlying area, that's the title. That section references Wakeman Drive and Wakeman Road, which is a bit of a misnomer to start. I would replace those two statements with Enterprise Drive. I think that's the appropriate boundary line that is really referenced here. Wakeman Road, it is still platted, it does exist. Enterprise Drive was built after that and took over the intersection point with Lake Street. And now Enterprise Drive is really, or excuse me, Wakeman Road is really more of a utility path, a multi-use path as opposed to a paved right-of-way. It still is platted, however, if you look at the map, Enterprise Drive is the intersection with Lake Street. That's intended to be referenced there. That is in our code currently. The drafting of this was completed appropriately. However, if you're going to move forward with a change, I think it's an appropriate time to make that amendment.
So, where in letter B it says Wakeman Drive?
Outlying area, it references Lake Street intersecting Wakeman Drive. That's an error. It should say Wakeman Road there. That was what was intended at the time. However, I would take a step further and refer to both Wakeman Drive and then the next statement regarding west or east of Wakeman Road to be Enterprise Drive.
So, in both places, the current name is Enterprise Drive, is what you're telling us? Okay.
So, kind of a Scrivener error issue. It's not really, but it didn't persist through time. Enterprise Drive was platted subsequently and is the appropriate intersection that's referenced with Lake Street.
So, would someone like to make a motion to introduce that amendment?
I would, I'll motion to make that amendment to replace Wakeman Drive and Wakeman Road with Enterprise Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Koots.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Koots and a second by Ms. Quidno. Any discussion on that amendment, on that change? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the amendment to section B of ordinance 1280?
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Carler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. So, we've made that name correction in section B. So, we're back to discussing ordinance 1280 as amended. And the primary addition is the new letter C regarding a speed limit on Milton Street. On the floor, discussion. Michelle?
So, I'm wondering, not to say that if we were to pass this at any given moment, is it possible to change the speed limit back?
Sure, you'd have to change the ordinance again. The, 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 not that it would take very long, but the change won't be in effect until the sign is installed. But yeah, you'd have, you'd have to amend the ordinance again to change it back to 25 miles an hour. You'd have to eliminate it from this section essentially. Yeah. Yeah, you, the council can change its ordinances whenever it would like.
Well, that I knew. I just didn't know.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no time period on reversing a decision or making a change, something like that.
Okay, I'm just thinking along the lines of if down 20 years from now, the residents on Milton Street change demographics, like it would be something worth considering. But currently, no.
Any other comments or questions? Greg?
I have a comment. I guess I'm concerned with this ordinance because it seems to be targeting a certain group within our community, that being new drivers. I've done some research over the, over the last couple of weeks. And when I was walking my dog on Friday, I noticed that the football team came back from their Belleville game, which was out of town. It was late at night. And I was shocked by how well behaved those football players were and their parents as they were leaving the high school. They were all under the speed limit. It was, it was kind of neat to see. Monday night, or Monday after school yesterday, I again walked my dog on Milton Street for 20 minutes right after school was dismissed. There were six vehicles that, that were on Milton Street that day after school was dismissed. Two of them were adults, four of them were children, or were young, new drivers. And they were all well below the 25 mile per hour speed limit. So, my concern is what position are we putting our residents in by lowering the speed to 15 miles per hour? If you look at Wisconsin Code, chapter 343 dash point 32, section 2B, if you exceed the speed limit by 10 miles per hour, you have four demerits. So, we all know the speed limit in residential areas is 25 miles per hour. So, if you get caught going a little bit over 25 miles per hour on Milton Street, if we pass this, you're going to lose four demerits. And the penalty is worse for our new drivers because they're on probation until the age of 18. And I'm not sure exactly what that all entails because I'm not under 18 at this point. But I do know, what I've been told is that if you receive a moving violation, your probation gets extended.
It's doubled. The point.
Yeah, the points are doubled.
Points are doubled and you're, and you get an extension on the probation. Is that true?
That part I'm not, I'm familiar with. If you, if you exceed 12 in a year, you'd get habitual traffic offender status and that requires additional classes. Chief is going to come up. Yeah, please.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for being here.
So, there's a difference between a probationary driver's license, which gets you through age 18, and a graduated driver's license, which new drivers under the age of 18 have what they call a GDL or graduated driver's license for the first nine months that they have a license. If you get a site, moving citation under that GDL restricted license, then your GDL restrictions get extended for a period of time. I believe for six months. If you get a moving violation on a probationary license, it also does double the points of the violation. So, you would get both of those penalties if you had a GDL.
Okay, thank you.
You can stick around, Chief.
There might be more, I don't know.
There might be more. Continue, Greg.
So, as I was reviewing this ordinate, this ordinance, and I went and looked at the, the chapter that it, that it was, that it was quoting in the ordinance, I have some issues with it, I guess. Chapter 349 point 11, it seems to govern the state highway system. This is a residential road that we're talking about. Maybe because the residential road links to the highway? Maybe that's why that's referencing this, this, this chapter, but it doesn't seem to apply. Also, this chap, this chapter specifically says the local authority to determine to declare a reasonable and safe speed limit is based on engineering and traffic investigations. We did that and the traffic study did not seem to warrant a change on the speed limit. Also is written, this would make 15 miles per hour permanent on Milton Street. I believe we originally talked about making it like a school zone. So, it would be why children are present. It would be at 15, otherwise it'd be at 25. But this ordinance is at 15, 24 hours a day. All of our school zones in the city, our streets that are surrounding the school, except for Ferry, Lake Park Place, and Church, they do not have school zone signs. I was surprised when I drove around and looked at the school zone signs because I honestly didn't know that they were on all these roads. And I think I just automatically drive 25 and don't recognize the speed zone being 15 during certain times of the day. But I am concerned that, that this goes beyond a school zone 15 miles per hour. It's a permanent 15 miles per hour. So, these are my concerns and I'm having a hard time supporting it as written because it, it seems to penalize the new drivers and it seems to be, be targeting them. And I know that I've heard discussions from council members in the past meetings. I've heard discussions from residents. They're mentioning the, the new drivers as, as a concern. And, and I don't know, I just don't see it. We've reviewed this twice from a, from a, a study standpoint. In both times, it didn't seem to warrant a change in, in the speed limit or any, any measures at this point. So, I'm having a hard time supporting it at this point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mary?
Greg, you're bringing up a good point about the school zone, the school times, when school's in session as being, I know the residents have brought up school zone as a school zone sign as another improvement or an option for consideration. I don't know, that still would take it to 15, but during past periods. I have a perspective only because I live on Ferry, South Ferry, and I see the, the traffic and it's, it's teachers and it's students and it's buses. And I can, I know I'm not in a 15 mile per hour zone and I can tell you it is fast. And they're close and there's a lot of cars. The volume is heavy. And so, I, I am sensitive to, I'm certain, what they're seeing on Milton Street. And so, and I don't, I don't see necessarily that the little wiggle on 15, 15 miles per hour over at Bartles Beach, is, they have to slow down because it's a curve, but they don't go from 15 to 15 on the sign. As soon as they whip around the curve and they get that straightaway, the traffic picks up. I mean, I, because I see that, I've been seeing that since I've lived there. So, I, I like the, the, I can support 15, but you've got me thinking about should it be more school zone related versus it being all the time? Isn't it, I don't know what the pros and cons regarding how that changes driving behavior. Because the, the, we, the, I, the residents have brought up that the concern is primarily the student pass period time. It's the time, it's the lunch, we heard it today, the lunch, the early, the late. So, I support the 15, but you're bringing up an interesting perspective regarding the school zone timeframeing as being perhaps where the the change in speed would be required and desired versus it being at all times. It's just something, I hadn't thought about that as an option.
Michelle?
Chief? What are the school times? When it says school zone, is it just when children are present? Or have there been signs where there's a time given?
So, it says when children are present, and when children are present doesn't mean when there are children present at the school. So, not all day during the school day. What it means is when there's children present on or about the street or sidewalk area adjacent to that street, either coming to school or leaving from school. So, the example given of like a lunch period where high schoolers are leaving in their vehicles, that would not be a school zone time where a school zone speed limit would be enforced. It would be in the morning when there are pedestrians, students walking to school. In the afternoon, when there are pedestrians, students walking away from school. Or they're about the road area. It would have to be there specifically on Milton Street for it to be in effect on Milton Street. So, if there are pedestrians walking on the east side of Main Street before school or after school, the 15 mile per hour speed limit would not be in effect on Milton Street at that same time.
I really appreciate you clarifying that because that was a question that I had. I have this idea that school zone, school zones are to protect the children who are walking to and from school.
Correct.
Which is, you know, may, may have some overlap, but distinct from the children who may live at the homes along that street, for example.
Correct.
Okay.
Follow-up question to that, Chief. Are there signs that you would say would satisfy the idea of slow children are present that would help with giving alert or awareness to this particular street and its potential for being a Speedway because of the residents without it changing the miles per hour? Because what I'm trying to do is, is trying to see options that are available if this does not pass. So, what I'm, I'm wondering is, is do we as a city have the option to have slow children are present signs to put up?
I would have to look at them UTSD to see what signs are actually available and authorized to be placed along a roadway. I would assume there is something that would be available similar to that. But I, off the top of my head, I can't say, I'm, Dwayne's typing away, so I don't know if he's searching for something right now. So, very likely there is a sign that could be placed there, something to that effect. You know, similar to like you see a deaf child in the area or something to give alert to motorists that there's something special to look out for in the area.
Thanks. Greg?
School zones are defined in 11808. And they're defined as roads that are, which border the grounds of schools, which is why you see them immediately next, next to the schools. So, that is, that's a statutory definition that, something else. As far as what signs, I, I don't know all those implications. I can tell you that 11808 is the statutory definition of a school zone. I would also agree with, with my fellow Greg on the council that we have had studies and the studies do show that there is nothing particularly special about Milton Street. The speed studies have shown that although there are some people at speed, there are people at speed on every street. And we had the chief tell us that, you know, there are other streets in town that probably have more speeders on them based on, based on some of the studies that have happened. Even, even some of the, some of the data that's been presented to us by Mr. Clark, talking about rates of population there, taking out, even taking out the fact that 15 or 16 homes is a pretty small sample size to base any, any sort of decision on as far as like a percent goes. The percents that they gave, that we got last week, you know, 9% having ADHD and on Milton Street, the rate's 10. Well, that's the same when you're, especially when you're talking about the small sample size. Same thing, 3% or 5%. Well, it's the same number. So, in, I would agree that the, the data that, that we have doesn't show anything particularly special about that street. But it is special to the people on that street, which is why this has been brought forward as, as an alternative. And we can vote it up or vote it down, but I do think that the residents of the street have shown enough interest. You know, we, we beg residents for interest in things, which is, I think, why this is here. It is a much lower cost alternative than some of the stuff that was being pitched before and something that I think we can take a look at. And I, the vote will be whatever the vote will be and we can vote it up or vote it down. But no, I'm not saying that there's a need for this as far as, as far as what the data shows. I'm saying the need for this is, this is something that we've been asked to take a look at. So, I, this is an alternative that we have that we should take a look at and make a decision on.
Thank you, Mr. Koots.
Can I comment really quick? I apologize, I don't want to interrupt. I have to find the statutory reference. I've obviously done some research on school zones and what municipalities are able to do. Although yes, 118 does define school zones as those roads adjacent to the school building. I believe there's also a statutory reference that allows the municipality to establish a school safety zone that is necessarily outside of that area. a school safety zone that is necessarily outside of that area. So, it's not impossible to make a school zone that isn't adjacent to the school property itself. An example of that would be ma- ma- North Main Street. It's not adjacent to the elementary school, but it is a school zone.
Thanks. Greg, did you have your hand up again?
So, what Mr. Coates was referencing was the ordinance for the school zone? Was that what you were referencing?
He's referencing chapter one eighteen of Wisconsin statutes. Which establishes school zones by statute and those are the roads that are adjacent to the school property.
So, Mr. Jasher, do we have a separate ordinance for school zones then?
We designate certain areas as school zone under the power that Chief just described. I've been told before that that extends to approximately a thousand feet from a school. You can determine within that area that it is, in fact, a safety s- a safety z- zone or a school zone. So, yes, there are areas within the city that have been defined as school zones that are not immediately adjacent to schools.
So, those school zones are established by?
Local ordinance, specifically North Main Street, which Chief brought up.
So, there is a an ordinance then?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. All right.
Just one other point of of clarification, per- perhaps it's a small one. Within the state statute, three forty-nine dash eleven, when it when it's saying highway, it does say state highway system, but when it's mentioning highways, highways is synonymous with road in this. So, when it says highways under our jurisdiction, a local road falls under that classification as as well. It's just how the statutes have been written. They say highways under our jurisdiction. It's the public highway, the public roadway.
Well, and isn't it paragraph three in there that talks about what local, what the local municipalities ha- can do?
Right. Like you wouldn't specifically lays it out. Like you wouldn't be able to take the speed limit to five miles an hour, right? There's a limit in how much you can reduce it as well as limits on what you can set it at.
But that ordinance also says that it's based on engineering and traffic investigation?
True.
Okay. Or not ordinance, that statute.
Statute, which are which are ordinance cross references.
There are, sorry to interrupt, there are signs that could be set to where it's flashing, correct?
Like solar powered signs that will blink around the speed limit.
Like fifteen miles per hour when flashing.
We don't have any in the city of Lake Mills that I'm aware of. You could, the rapid reflective beacons are put positioned at a few locations within the city of Lake Mills, generally as a part of construction projects. When we've replaced signs in the past, we have not included solar power or electric power. Oftentimes, there isn't electric infrastructure immediately available to where the sign is, you know, previously placed. That is something that could be done. It has not been included in budgets in the past or or as a matter of policy that that's what we're doing.
Okay. I think, I know there's some flashing signs for crosswalks in a couple of places around the city, but not not for speed limits. I wanted to toss in a few thoughts and I appreciate everybody else's comments. I agree with the Gregs that, you know, we really don't have any data to, any traffic data to support making a change here. I'm 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 been so inspired by the passion of the people on Milton Street and their obvious fondness for and care for one another and and wanting to protect their neighbors and protect those who are vulnerable, those who are younger, older, maybe have disabilities. I think our job on the city council, and I think I've said this before, is to protect all of our citizens and I think, you know, people move, people change what streets they live on, what communities they live in. I have elderly people, I have disabled people, I have children on my street as well. And so, I I think somebody's saying, trying to, as a council member looking at this ordinance, I'm not seeing what's unique about Milton Street compared to, you know, the other streets in our community that I think we want to protect everyone and have the appropriate speed limit to do that all around our community. I I'm intrigued by the twenty is plenty initiative that some of the Milton Street folks brought to our attention and I wasn't familiar with it before that. And it would be interesting to look at something like that for our entire city, but to me to call out one street where we don't have traffic or engineering data to identify a problem and then, but yet treat it differently, I I just, I'm I'm having trouble seeing the justification and it makes me wonder, well, what's going to be next? We've already had one public commenter tonight say, well, we have children on our street too and the cars go too fast and maybe our street should have this. So, I think if we value pedestrians and bicyclists and and all the other things that I that I believe we do in our community, then I think that's something that we could look at at a broader scale, but I don't see an objective measure to support changing the changing the speed limit on Milton Street.
Okay. Michelle.
I hear what you're saying and I hear what Mr. Waters is saying and what Mary has said and what Greg has said. I agree with Greg that the people are who we represent and I believe it's important that we listen to what they say. And they have come every single, every single meeting since, I don't know when, but it feels like it's been several. And, you know, we were able to to grant something for them, which was a great thing, but at the same time, I hear what they're saying. And as a parent and as a special ed teacher, this puts me in a unique position because I understand the plight that these that these families have and this concern. The other piece of it is that it is only one block long. We're not talking about South Ferry, which is several blocks long. It's one block. And to me, I know this sounds like we, if we if we do this now, we're setting a precedent and that then then further, you know, people are going to say, well, you did this for Milton Street, why can't you do this for other streets? And I could, I could answer that by saying, is your street more than one block or is your street only one block long? Because in that case, I can understand why you would be confused, but I just don't see why it's so difficult to do it for one block. I understand if it was for several blocks, that would be an inconvenience, that could be a safety problem. But one seems kind of like piddly in comparison to all of the cities that we have in front of us. And yeah, I'm sure Chief is not surprised to see that there is a lot of speeding on South Ferry and now we're down a couple of 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 officers to be able to do the things that, you know, that citizens would like us to, like them to do and to be able to be there and catch the things that are happening. So, I'm going to vote in favor of changing it to fifteen miles an hour and I might be in the minority, but that is the way that I'm going to vote. And if it does not pass, I would like to explore other options, which has to do with the signage, as mentioned before, where it would be flashing or something to bring attention to the teenagers because they need flashing something or anyone for that matter needs flashing something because all too often we are looking at our phones. I would hope that these people would be not doing that for a one block road, but hey, who am I to judge?
Just if I can, just a few, a few thoughts, I guess. One, I just, I just want to clarify, even though we are not at full staff in the police department, road coverage remains maintained, right? The chief will get in a patrol car and patrol the streets before we go without coverage. So, I just, I just want to make that clear. The second piece is, is you think that the conversation is difficult when we're zoned in on one specific block within within the community and I think there's, there's two pieces to that. We have data that show, that certainly shows that speeding at the current speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour, it doesn't justify any additional design features on that road because of it. What, no matter what data we collect, no matter how much speed data we collect, what that data's not going to be able to tell you is whether twenty-five miles per hour is the correct speed limit on that road. It'll tell you if people are are exceeding it, if they're generally complying, but it can't tell you whether fifteen miles per hour is the optimal s- speed limit in that spot. On the flip side of that, I think that, I think it is difficult to manage a roadway system by setting speed limits or traffic control measures or anything based on feedback from those who live on the street. We would have, we, I'm not exaggerating when I tell you the amount of requests, for example, we get for stop signs throughout the community. It is, every year we get several, largely for the reason that people believe that stop signs will reduce speeds, which they generally do not. They, they're not allowed to be speed control systems. So, I think if the council believes fifteen miles per hour is the optimal speed limit on Milton Street for whatever reasons that you may determine, I think an analysis of what conditions exist on that street, applied to other streets in the community, to broaden the conversation over what is the optimal speed limits in areas such as this. Is it a certain amount of distance around a school? That may be where it should be fifteen miles per hour. Is it that the the council believes that the data on pedestrian vehicular collisions at twenty miles per hour everywhere in the city is compelling enough? That data is compelling enough between, the difference between someone traveling thirty, twenty-five, twenty, whatever it may be, is compelling enough to make a citywide change similar to adopting the twenty is enough program is as some municipalities have done. So, I I think that the council, what the council is grappling with is what is the optimal speed? The data that we can collect for you can't tell you what that is. If you believe that certain roads within a certain distance of a school should be fifteen miles per hour, then I think we should take that criteria that this council establishes and apply it to the roads within that same distance of the other schools within our community. And that would would establish an objective criteria as to why the speed limit exists where we have designated it and is not simply, we did it because the residents asked us to, because that can happen on any street with with that may or may not be what the optimal speed should be as determined by this council. So, I think you do need to take a step back and say, what are our goals as far as speed control, speed limits within the community as a whole, or if it's not the community as a whole, on roadways that are within a certain proximity of schools? And apply that standard uniformly throughout our community so that we have a standard to fall back on and justify that decision when others come and ask, why is Milton Street fifteen miles per hour when Westlake Park Place isn't? Or, you know, take any two roads and and compare them. So, that would be my advice to the council. As far as how you want to proceed, is that if you believe fifteen miles per hour is what the speed limit should be in areas around schools, we establish that criteria and apply it uniformly across areas of similar condition.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Any further discussion or comments this evening?
So, I was thinking, I had mentioned this the last time, we were talking about traffic calming measures, thinking along the same lines, Drake, is what you were just talking about. Because when I think of of Milton Street, it is, there's, what is unique about Milton Street? Well, it's a feeder right off from the high school, it catches, two high schools, it catches Lakeside students. So, it does have some unique circumstances that I feel the data, the data's imperfect, you know, our sample sizes aren't great, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily meet some of the the points that are noted in 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 triggering something different. But I, I, I know we have in the city, specific areas that are, I feel, are higher risk points because they exist in certain, they have certain conditions. And so, I, I would be supporting a change on Milton Street. I don't know, I don't know, it's, it's, you got me on the school zone concept though, but it is the school that's driving it for me. I, I, I see those drivers, there are a lot of them, they are, they're, it's, it's just the nature of how they have to get to where they're going. And so, I, and then it's newly paved and so I am kind of going, ooh, that makes it, you know, just a new obstacle. But then there's the Catlin Drive conversation, which might be another interesting, again, it's like where else do we have something that might be similar and do we need to be looking at right, left turns anywhere else? I mean, that's kind of, coming out of that high schools, I think, an interesting possible solution that might move trag- might cause new problems. So, now there might be drivers who are speeding on Milton and it was one of my concerns, like you might push it off a street. Well, then that question becomes, well, then does it become a new targeted area for discussion and why? But I, I, I would be open to working on or working on with the, this would go back to Public Works, wouldn't it though? I guess Greg, I guess would be popping over to Public Works, but to propose consideration of the criteria and are there, what other streets would benefit from a fifteen mile per hour speed limit as, as it relates to understanding the criteria by which we would consider Milton Street and looking at it on a broader perspective? Because I would support the fifteen mile per hour there, but it's because in my mind, it's like the eighty-twenty rule. Eighty percent of, or ninety-ten, I don't know which rules y'all like, but not everything is perfect, it's imperfect. You have, you have the ten or twenty percent that have unique circumstances and I think Milton has one of those. Even though the citizens, the data might not be showing it, but I, I think the citizens have brought enough information, I've observed it. I've, I, I believe that it is a, that you don't have anything to lose, you have a lot to gain in changing the speed limit, in my personal opinion, in this particular case, but I like the broader, the broader look, I think, is to the benefit of the entire city.
That's why I asked the first question was, if down the line, we had to change the speed limit, how difficult would that be? Not too hard. So, in my opinion, this is an easy try.
Well, I think it'd be harder going to fast. If you, once you have it slow, I think it's harder to go fast, just on my personal.
I mean, there's that too, you never know, but I'm, I'm just saying, like, it seems, seems like a logical thing to do.
I appreciate your comments, Mary, and the idea of looking more broadly and I think that's what our city manager is is encouraging us to think about. I guess with that in mind though, I would see approving this ordinance would be doing it outside of that process and without any identified criteria for why we're, why we're putting it in place on this street, so.
Or what other streets might also qualify, it might be more than just Milton Street.
But it sounds like you have some criteria in your own minds for why you think this qualifies, but we haven't gone through a policymaking process to, you know, agree on that and and have that in place for the city. So, that's what I think, it's a little problematic.
Right, but it could also give us ideas of what that could look like. So, yeah, maybe they got grandfathered in, but it's going to take us that much longer to put something together, to gather all that information and in the meantime, you know, they have been coming every single meeting. I'm just, I, I feel like it's not that difficult for us to say, yeah, okay, let's give this a go. And then we can look at this objective criteria for school zone streets and and set those standards, which I really believe Milton Street would fall into.
Greg, you had your hand up.
Thank you.
Sorry.
For me, Milton Street doesn't fit into ordinance twelve eighty. It doesn't meet the statutory requirement that's stated here. It falls more, I think we would put ourselves at risk actually with some of these school zones that aren't, or some of these streets that are within the school areas that aren't designated school zones like Ferry, Lake Park Place, Church Street. I think Milton Street Um, I think Milton Street belongs more in the school zone area, and it should be in that ordinance, not this ordinance, so.
And I'm not familiar with that ordinance, so I think I'm not informed enough to, you know.
There are, there are established school zones that are in accordance with state statute, there are established school crossing zones that are adopted in local ordinance. So I guess I would like to clear that up. We've exercised local authority in establishing school zones generally. Um, we do not have roads that I'm aware of, that I can think of off the top of my head that are designated as school zones regarding speed limit that are not immediately adjacent to schools. So I think maybe that clarifies it a little bit from, from the conversation earlier.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? So we have ordinance 1280, and it's been amended to, um, change the names, Wakeman to Enterprise Drive in section B. Any, seeing not, no further.
Can I add one thing, I guess, before you close? Um, immediately after the meeting in June, when this topic was discussed at length, and I spoke quite a bit on it, um, I, I had a plan, I talked with Drake about the plan that when the Milton reconstruction project was done, that we would do another traffic study there, right? That there's a need to get fresh data on a new road that now seems wider, even though it may not be wider, um, and to get data, um, for a longer period of time in both directions, um, on Milton Street. Just to have a, a fresh set of data and to have a more complete set of data on what the speeds are. Um, so I still plan on doing that, no matter what happens tonight, I'm going to do that. Right now, we're on Prospect Street, preparing for the next road reconstruction project, doing the same analysis. So, just happens that Milton Street wasn't open when school opened, um, and even as of yesterday, there was a lot of construction going on on the road with, um, the boulevards and things being, being fixed. So, um, once all that work is done, we will do a new speed study on the road. Um, the, the other thing I would say is, and Drake hit on it, and, and it's my thought too, is if the goal is to, for drivers to drive 15 miles per hour on Milton Street, then this is an appropriate ordinance. Okay? If the goal isn't for drivers to drive 15 miles per hour on Milton Street 24 hours a day, then it's not an appropriate ordinance. And I guess I leave it at that. Obviously enforcement is a key part of any change, of any existing speed limit or any change in speed limits, so that's something that my agency will be responsible for. Um, 15 miles per hour is slow. It's very slow. Um, the existing data we have says that 85% of cars are going 20 miles per hour or under. So if we want them at 15, that's fine, make it 15 miles per hour. The data to date, without the opportunity to gather more data before a decision is made, really doesn't say that there's a speeding problem on Milton Street. So I think this is a very subjective decision, rather than an objective decision.
Thank you, Chief. Any further discussion? Okay, Misty, would you please call the role on ordinance 1280 as amended?
Mr. Waters?
No.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Koots?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Thank you. Okay, so we skipped over letter C, so we'll go back to that, which is a presentation on the strategic plan progress report, and I'm suspecting that this is a tag team with Mary and Drake together? Is that right?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, uh, I uncovered, and when I was, uh, so kindly asked to take on the vice president role, that there is a strategic plan reporting, um, requirement, and so I'm uncovering that, and hopefully we'll be able to bring that forward, um, whoever has this role will be able to bring that forward on an annual basis. And I wanted to just say thank you to Drake and likely some of your staff or team perhaps that helped fill in a lot of the accomplishments in the report. And I'm hoping you'll find that, uh, we've made a lot of great progress relating to the s- um, strategic information. So, um, this is just out of the plan. Um, if you recall, the plan was completed in September of 2022, and then we did a check-in in August of 2024. So this is just the information. Um, there were three big categories of, um, goals, five-year goals, financial stability and sustainability, governance and organizational effectiveness, and environmental sustainability and infrastructure. And it's wrapped around by the vision and the values, um, of the, um, city and, um, city council and staff. So the goals, um, I'm not going to read through these, I, I think this is just really for, um, documentation as a, as a, a stamp, if you will, on our progress, um, since 2022. But a lot of great things happening on, uh, regarding delivering the goals. A few things I say I want to, um, highlight is, um, the balance between the money, which is on the financial stability and sustainability, and then the, um, the processes, which is in the center of the governance and organizational effectiveness, and then the environmental sustainability and infrastructure. So that's more of, uh, some of the actual hardcore, getting some of the work done. So I think that, um, we, there's a lot of great work that had been completed at the highest level, um, delivering on, on the goals. And if you have any questions on anything, Drake and I will entertain, um, things as we go along. So, um, the five, when, um, I wasn't on the council at the time, but when y'all worked on it, you had six focus areas underneath those five, um, um, those three key goal areas. And then we added one in, um, 2024, in, in August, when we met last year. And so I'm going to just go through, um, and highlight a few things and turn it over to Drake, and, um, a few that I think are really interesting underneath each, each one of these, um, focus areas. And I know we're late tonight, so I think we're gonna, I'm gonna do more abbreviated, if that works for, for everyone, and you can ask questions if you have any. So the first one was public safety, and I believe that your real focus at the time was on EMS, um, specifically the words emergency services, and that was a priority. And I would say that I feel based on our report that we get monthly, um, that Drake provides to us, that that, um, service has been, the decision was, uh, and then the, the service has been going really well. Um, but there has been a lot of other public safety, um, broad public safety, um, completions here, and, uh, one of them today, we just talked about, was in Milton Street, um, traffic calming, uh, we did Cheryl markings recently, and so we have, uh, continued to focus on public safety, although perhaps have broadened it out. Drake, anything on public safety, safety you wanted to highlight?
I think probably just a general focus on the amount of resources that the city council has dedicated to, uh, public safety over the last several years. Um, obviously, the, uh, the acceptance of the cops grant and increasing our patrol strength by two officers, um, which took us back, you know, one officer took us back to pre-2008 levels, and then the additional one brought, would, brings us above that first, um, patrol strength, um, the investment in a new, in a new ladder truck, um, the, uh, use of ARPA funds to purchase the second-out ambulance, which has really made the contracted service with Ryan Brothers work, um, as well as it has, um, and provides, you know, a, a second, more coverage to the community than, than would otherwise have been available under only a contracted service. Um, and of course, I think the TAP grant, um, really was a big step in eliminating probably a majority of the sidewalk gaps that were remaining, there are still some, but 1.2 miles of sidewalks is a significant amount, and went into some pretty strategic areas in which we certainly want to avoid pedestrian and vehicular, um, interaction. Um, and we're able to, you know, get some permissions from the county to put it along county highways, uh, the, along the county highway, uh, specifically kind of near the, the grocery store, and then down, uh, past, uh, the car dealership, um, there as well. Certainly more work to be done, but that was obviously a, a, I believe, an 80/20 grant from the federal government, which also then allows us, um, to complete those projects without special assessments to the property owners that are along those routes. And so, um, I think that public safety has been, uh, a significant area of focus, and one in which we have accomplished many, uh, of the goals that we set out to.
And you will notice, the score is a smiley face. So, yeah, I decided to use emoticons, I'm into, you know, thinking about, what emotion do you get when you think about the amount of, like, where, what do our citizens think about, how we're doing in these? So that one's a big smiley.
So I want to see how you describe some of the ones.
Oh, yeah, just wait. Yeah. So the next one is wastewater treatment. Okay, I'll go right to the score. No one, like, flat face, wastewater treatment is a necessity. If we bombed on it, our ci- citizens would be irate, but it's not really excited, exciting, like, an exciting, you know, effort. So this is just like, a straight face. And it's not, and it's a straight face because it's, I, you know, again, it's not really an exciting effort, but it's straight because it's very complicated. And we've done a lot of work to make a decision to move forward, a lot of work, um, was done by Public Works over the course of time. Um, we've made the decision, we had a, a great dialogue tonight about our next steps and moving forward to the DNR. And so, uh, this one here, it is, I feel like we've, I think now we'll have, um, moving forward, it's, it's gotten, um, I think, um, more momentum behind it because we kind of have a game plan. And then we had the second, by the way, wastewater treatment had two aspects, it had the new wastewater treatment plant, or, um, and refreshing. And then we also had this public, you had a second sub-goal, which was, uh, public composting facility, and so there were some items in there. So Drake, do you have anything to add on wastewater treatment as one of the?
Uh, I think we're on a, on a path towards a, a resolution on that, which I think is, is good for both the utility as an organization and for the community to have some, uh, certainty, um, in the coming, uh, months and years there. I will say, kind of on the right side there, the yard waste drop-off site reopening, um, took a bit longer than we would have liked, we're still trying to coordinate to get internet down there to fully implement the, the controlled access. Um, but I also, and I also think that, um, you know, there on the right is also something that perhaps we sometimes, uh, struggle with, is, which is, um, kind of showing that some, something that has, has, was identified perhaps as a priority, but through the prioritization of other needs, i- is something that we haven't, have not pursued, uh, and hasn't been a, a strong focus, which is, there were some conversations over a composting facility. Um, and it's just simply something that we haven't dedicated, um, capacity, um, and resources towards achieving, um, which I think is also okay, as we kind of look at strategic priorities and what it is we're accomplishing, and what's still out there, is that those priorities can change, and you're not able to accomplish everything that you may want to in the time period that you are, and that we have limited resources that need to be dedicated towards the things of the highest importance, um, certainly to the city council. And so, um, that's also a piece of the conversation, is, is what things are we not going to focus on? Or have we not focused on?
Okay, any questions? Okay, staffing and financial prioritization was the third focus area, and there were three subcategories of, uh, to address. Financial challenges, staffing and financial options that have the most impact, and clarity in communication, understanding of available financial strategies. And I'd say that there, um, this one got a green smiley face. A lot done in this area, um, and I, this, I think we, I think Drake could have put a dozen more bullets on here, so I'm sure you'll have a, a few highlights. Um, I think one of them is the very first bullet, um, $3 million in grants, um, being secured, so I think that's a, a big win, when you have something of that magnitude. Um, and then also, I, um, highlighted the full-time building inspector and zoning administrator. Got, I've always get a lot of feedback from citizens that talk about how, um, well, that that role has been integrated in, into the city, and everyone thinks very highly of you, in your role, so, Troy. So, anyway, um, anything to add?
I think just to add to that is that it's been so successful that other communities have taken advantage of our services, and that we're now, it's now a, a revenue stream, uh, at no reduction in service to the residents of our community. Um, I do think, you know, we are a financially strong organization, um, that doesn't mean that we're not without financial challenges. Of course, the desires and expectations are always exceed the amount of resources that we have, and so you see, there has been some, you know, the parks board has, has looked at park fee schedules, there's been some updates to that, there'll be some others that they've done, that they've made recommendations on, that'll be coming to the city council that we'll be talking about as part of the, the budget process. Um, I think the middle there, I, I don't think we can really understate that, the market rate adjustments that we made, um, just a couple years ago, as well as now maintaining, um, a more competitive, um, cost of living, as well as, uh, you know, merit-based increases into the budget. I don't think that can be understated as to what that's done, um, for, uh, employee retention, employee morale, as well as ensuring that we have the best possible employees here to provide the service that, uh, our residents receive. Um, it has certainly, um, uh, impacted, uh, the amount of, of recruitment that we have, uh, we have to do, and has impacted the amount of applicants that we get when we do, um, have an opening. Um, and so I think that, um, that really is, is a highlight, I think, of the three years that I've been here, is, um, that was a, a intentional and significant investment in what is our greatest resource, which is the employees that provide the services to our community.
I'd like to just make a comment on this one, um, I'm, I'm sure we, we may all have comments on different pages, but this one in particular, I feel like, uh, 99% of the credit goes to Drake and his team for accomplishing this. It wasn't the council's idea to do a staffing plan, it wasn't the council's idea to implement market rate adjustments, um, adjust fees, fi- identify other revenue sources, identify grants, that all comes from, um, Drake and his team. So I, you know, kudos to you, and I think it's, if there's a bigger smiley face, or one with stars in the eyes, or something like that, I think it, it really deserves that, so thank you.
Yeah, the, the, um, goals and objectives and focus areas were a balance, a nice balance between some, I think, real heavy lifting for Drake, and then also some that really are, does require and will continue to require city council, um, to do some heavy lifting. So, yeah, this was, okay, I'll put stars on the, on the eyes on the next one. Um, so the next focus area is Sandy Beach, and the, the direction that was set forth in the strategic plan document was to do a step-by-step process to complete three phases of development with focus on phase two, which was restaurant and parking lot. And so, I wanted to make sure we highlighted, a lot of work was done to look at the restaurant. And it, it got to a point where we, we made the decision not to pursue the, the model that went forward in the referendum, but it, a lot of work was done. It, it took a, a lot of, um, I know city council and staff, um, was heavily involved in really, um, truly investigating, uh, a lot of options to get to the point of going to that referendum. And we continue to move forward with Sandy Beach work, and, um, it, it's not noted here because that we completed this document, uh, before we made the decision recently on part B. Um, and, uh, the parks board, we, we all have the document from the parks board, we haven't had a chance to discuss, uh, some of the elements in there, which restaurant or some food services, uh, will be a part of the discussion, not in the same, um, uh, same angle as the, as what was, what was, um, discussed a few years ago. But, um, I think momentum here is going to continue to move forward with the alternatives coming, um, from, from staff. And this particular emoticon is what I think our citizens are feeling. They're just frazzled, because they're excited, I, I don't know if there's some strings out on Facebook, people are starting to post pictures of some new ideas that they have, and I think they're excited and anxious, and so this is, and, but they're frazzled because they, you know, they, they, they don't know they don't know, and they want to plan, and so this was just the, the Google eye, you know, little emoticon. Anything, Drake, on Sandy Beach you wanted to add?
I think, I, it just popped in my head, but one thing that we perhaps have never really touched on is, I, I don't remember exactly what year this was, but there was an adoption of, you know, beach testing procedures that the city council adopted, and, um, there are, you know, the, the city of Lake Mills does do a significant amount of testing as compared to other lake communities in, in the surrounding area, and we have certainly worked on improving the dissemination of that information when we get those results back. Obviously, swimming is always at your own risk on our public beaches, but, um, it is another piece of information we can provide to give visitors to those beaches a, uh, you know, a decision, a, assistance in making a decision over whether, uh, you know, how that beach is, and then also. how that beach is, and then also just the, the work that the parks department does, that Eric's staff does, is, it's a, you know, it's a constant battle largely against geese populations and seagull populations. But if you ever get out there in the morning, usually before 8:00 AM, they're, they're raking those beaches out. They're removing, you know, material from there. They are doing their best to ensure that the beach is in the best condition that it can be. And so I think that that's important to focus on and, and just the, you know, the policy that the council adopted on testing, on testing and frequency of testing and where we test and how often we test is something I think we can highlight because not every community chooses to, to adopt procedures like that and make decisions to post, you know, beach closure warnings or, or things of that nature. Because obviously there's an impact when you, when you close beaches, there's obviously an impact to the community as well. So I think that's something to, to mention regarding Sandy Beach that maybe isn't part of like the overall redevelopment of it, but that there are things that we've been doing to try and maintain what is one of the greatest assets that the city has.
I, I think that recommendation came from the Joint Rock Lake Committee at some time, but it was since 2021. And council reviewed it and I don't remember if we tweaked it or, or whatnot, but, but we did, did review it and pass it, I guess. So, yeah.
Okay, number five, communications. So we had, there were two different areas in the plan, tools and technology and engaging citizens in a variety of ways. And this particular motocan is chosen, I think this one here, you can never communicate enough. As much as you keep thinking you're communicating, you just, it just, it's imperfect. We're all humans and although I want to do a shout out, the website is great. I personally think it's so modernized and easier to navigate. And I like all the postings with the key critical things going on. And so I think that's a big shout out for getting that work done. I know that launched, wasn't all that long ago. I think we're coming up on a year. Wasn't it last, like this winter?
I think it went live in February.
February, yeah, coming up on a year. So I just think we can, we just got to keep thinking of how to do more of this. I know, Drake, what do you think?
I think, yeah, this is an area of continual improvement. I think the difficulty in today is that there's such a diverse way that people receive information, right? You have our, our, certainly our statutory requirements of, of posting agendas, putting notices in the newspaper when that's necessary. But obviously that is only going to reach a certain people who have proactively either sought out that information, signed up to be on the email list or is checking the website. You know, social media, we have increased our usage of social media. There's challenges related to, to social media as well as, and managing what we have a limited staff in order, in order to do. And so we do struggle with when you put information out and then you receive questions via social media. It's not something we're staffed to be sitting and answering questions on when, when a post goes out. And so that's something that we continue to grapple with is we don't have dedicated employees to social media management. And it certainly can be at certain times and depending on what information you're, you're pushing out. So we try and direct people to the city website or to contact us via email or phone to answer, to answer questions, just because if someone were to contact us on social media, it may be a significant amount of time before we use it. Alert sense, we have been using more as well, certainly the public works department specifically on when power outages occur or water main breaks or things of that nature. That is a, an effective way to blast something out quickly. Of course, there's the difficulty of getting people to sign up for it as well. So we're talking, you know, the website, the newspaper, social media, public meetings, obviously cert, you know, surveys, input sessions, whatever that may be. It will be always something that we will continue to try and improve on and will likely never be able to reach everybody, but we, we'll certainly continue to try.
Okay, next, number six is infrastructure and capital improvements. And this I gave a smiley face. I think a lot of progress continuing, especially the, the improvement and the PESA rating. I, I know since when I was on public works board, boy, that's really, I think, improved over the course of the tenure of the strategic plan in place. And so I'm not going to, I'll let you do any highlights here, Drake. I gave it a smiley face.
Yeah, the, the maintenance program has been immensely successful. I think you all see Duane's presentation every year. And it's something that Duane's been instrumental in setting up as well as maintaining over the years. And so an average score of 6.9 is excellent, especially when you consider you can only get a 10 for one year. And it's the year after you reconstruct and have a brand new road. So you can only have a top score for so long. And I think that, that also speaks to the amount of savings that we have experienced because of the commitment to chip ceiling and milling and overlay in order to extend the lives of those streets and reduce the number of reconstructions that we need to have on our, you know, capital improvement plan. And I think sticking with the capital improvement plan and continuing to make investments, not only in the roadways, but the utilities underneath of them as well, continues to bear dividends for us. Communication has improved in that sense. We do put signs out on the streets. You see the message boards at the entrance to the community and in the areas where it's going to occur. There's also direct notices typically placed on the door. We, you know, sometimes we still have people that we miss and call and ask us what might be going on, on road X, Y, or Z. But I think we've done a much better job. We've incorporated certain, you know, notice requirements into contracts that we have with contractors for, you know, setting up of signs and delivering notices. And so we've definitely incorporated it into our practices to the greatest, you know, extent that we can. We hold more public information meetings than we did in the past on-road projects. I think we can continue to improve on when and how many we have and, and how we, you know, communicate to residents what their pathway is to provide comment to the policymakers during that kind of design process or when it starts at Public Works and goes through the bidding process and gets to the end where it's ultimately time to award what those steps are. But I think we have definitely improved in this area in making investments and communicating to the impacted areas.
I'd like just to make a quick comment. I don't in any way want to change the smiley face, but I would just put in an asterisk because if I recall, I think we've been getting some information from staff that, you know, the level of investment that we are making is maybe not keeping us on track to, you know, continue that seven-year cycle. And so I think that's just something I want to make sure that we stay aware of, that the success is only possible if we keep, you know, keep the funding up to keep, to keep that cycle going.
Yeah, we are coming up back on, we started out with, I think, a million dollar year and we're probably coming up on a year in which we need something greater than the 300,000 that we typically allocate into the maintenance plan. So I think that is important to keep in mind as we continue planning for infrastructure improvements.
So maybe it's a smiley face, but not green. Good progress, but, okay. And then we added in August of 2024, a seven. Did you all remember those six focus areas, by the way? Okay, number seven, we added downtown plan. And our, our primary, I think, the emphasis, our discussion was around ensuring that we had our line of sight on Sentry Site redevelopment. But there are other things that are kind of limped in here. And I put this little motocan as we, we don't, we didn't, haven't had like an in-depth discussion, like a Sandy Beach plan, if you will, in downtown. So our brains are still kind of cooking here and, you know, what else we might do should we have an opportunity to engage someone on that Sentry Site in the future. So anything to add on this one?
I think the only thing that I did not put on this is that there have been, there has been city investment, the pharmacy redevelopment, what included a, a grant application as well as some TIF support to bring that project to fruition. And I think that has certainly been an immense asset to our downtown. Obviously, the increased financial support to Legendary Lake Mills in the last budget, well, it's only $5,000. It is, you know, something that helps them continue to provide and support the fire, the night markets, the, the.
Farmer's market.
Thank you.
Yep.
I haven't slept in like seven months. The farmer's market. And so I think that continuing to make investments in the downtown as well as our partners that do have, you know, Legendary Lake Mills has projects like facade improvement and things that allow, that help our downtown businesses make investments into their, their buildings as well. So, you know, we, there has been some progress, but obviously Sentry Site remains our number one priority. I am optimistic that we are going to be successful in the redevelopment of that, of that site. It is, I think, going to be a matter of when some, you know, and I am optimistic we're going to see improvement there. But obviously it's, it's not, until it comes to fruition, that's not a guarantee. But we talk about the Sentry Site everywhere. We engage with developers. There's a TIF in place in order to assist in the redevelopment of that. There's some other things that staff is looking to bring forward in the future to, to potentially assist in that as well, that we should see in the coming months. So I think we are on a path to success here and we just have to keep trying.
Okay, so then the next slide is just the next steps. And I'm not going to, you had a chance to read them and review them, but these are just super high level in each of the key focus areas. And the, and so I don't know if there are any questions on some next steps. These are just the high level. Drake, I don't know, did you have anything you wanted to add on the next steps specifically? And Drake and I, and Lisa and I have actually had some conversations regarding the August 2024 discussion we had as a check-in we thought, I thought was very valuable. Taking a look to see where we're at, what is outstanding, what do we know that was new today? But the timing is off because the budget will have already been thought through by the time we actually would have perhaps uncovered something new. So it would have rolled into the following year. And so we're talking about thinking through would something, a conversation around a strategy check-in every late January, early February, sometime March, when staff might have a little bit of, I shouldn't say free time, but might have a, a gap in all of the chaos that you, they normally see in other parts of the year to actually do a strategy check-in and ask ourselves, is there something new that we know that we need to do any kind of change? And then rather than just doing a three-year, every three years or five-year, every five years, we just kind of keep a, kind of a rolling three or five-year look so that we keep this conversation fresh and moving forward. And so just, and, and also that possible, do we change, add a little roadmap on the big key things like Sandy Beach and wastewater treatment plant? That was a little map that you saw at the end. That's a conceptual thing for consideration. Is there something we should be doing that might be a nice snapshot to keep us thinking through? And a little bit more transparency regarding what's coming up when for big, big key things that are a part of our strategic priorities. And so more to come, more conversation, I think, moving forward. Yeah, Greg?
Thank you for the review. I, I think that last page is real important, the planning segment. We have limited resources here.
Yep.
And we can't do everything that, that we can just pull out of the air. I know from the community that the high priorities are Sentry Building and Sandy Beach Restaurant. Those are the things I get the most messages on long-term. I mean, we get blips from like Milton Street or the trailer park when those are hot issues, but the community is continually interested in Sentry, Sandy Beach Restaurant. So I know that Sandy Beach, we have some other things going, but, you know, we need to keep that in mind as, as we go through the planning process.
Thank you, Mary and Drake, for all this information. And, and I would love it if we got into just kind of a regular cycle of doing, you know, some, a February or March, maybe facilitated with a planner to just help us go through and, you know, do that annual check-in. Like you said, at a time of year where we've probably, you know, the finances are figured out from what we spent from the previous year. We've got a budget in place and we can be starting to think ahead for the next year. So we can talk about that more maybe when we have our budget work session and if we want to set some council contingency money aside for a consultant to help us with that. Any further comments on this for tonight? Okay, I'll note we have three second readings and a budget presentation and it's 10:04. So if there's no objection, I'd like to kind of roll through those and, and get through our agenda. So Misty, let's see, our next agenda item is ordinance 1281. And this is time for the second reading. So could you do the second reading for us, please?
Ordinance 1281, mending comprehensive plan, future land use map. Parcel number 24607131114000, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So that's the second reading. We'd be moving that to third reading at our next meeting. Any questions or comments tonight? Okay, seeing none. Misty, I'll move on to the next item, which is ordinance 1282. Misty, would you do that second reading, please?
Ordinance 1282, mending City of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 24607131114000. Owner, OAW Lake Mills LC, vacant land, south of Tyrena Park Road, east of Maple Court and west of Rock Lake Cemetery, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So that was second reading. We'll move on to third reading. Those last two items are the property sort of across the street from the Lake Mills Market.
If I could, just, I just wanted to say thank you for David for coming tonight in case there were any questions. I know it's been a late, it's a bit later than you may have expected, but I know the council does appreciate when the applicant comes for the meetings and is available, even when they don't know that questions might be asked of them. So just wanted to say thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you, David. I'm sorry we didn't realize that you were there. So we'll have the third reading next time. So then we'll, there'll be a little more activity, a little more discussion then. And so then our next item is ordinance 1283. Misty, could you do that second reading, please?
Ordinance 1283, mending City of Lake Mills, ordinance section 660-44A, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Parcel identification numbers 01807130133004 and 01807130133003. Owners, Lake Mills Area School District, Oasis Lane, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Okay, so that was the second reading. We'll advance this one to the third reading at our next meeting. So this, this is the bus barn property then for the school district. So I think we did this to you last year too, Drake. It was probably after 10 o'clock when we gave you the opportunity to give your budget presentation. But we do want to hear it from you and I, and I see you've prepared a nice memo for us summarizing.
Yeah, I, I, obviously I passed this out to you tonight. So I know there hasn't been a lot of time to review it. I don't, I don't want to, you know, belabor it and I know we're going to have a, a work session on it. So, you know, the first page really kind of lays out for you how this is comparing to previous years and some of the high-level numbers. So our net new construction was disappointing. 0.83%, certainly less than we have experienced in the last several years. That equates to, let's see, you know, our, our property, our operating levy in that first chart there, which is the property tax levy. So we're, we're going from $3,045,000 to $3,071,000. That is obviously not a sustainable amount in order to, to maintain levels of service. Now, there are things that we did that came out of the 25 budget that have allowed us to kind of absorb this year. If you recall, we had a successful change in health insurance providers, which coincided with a successful negotiation, which resulted in an increase in our health insurance costs, less than what was budgeted. And so we were over budgeted through and are over budgeted through 2025 in that, that savings is gone. That it's, it's now, health insurance, it will now be budgeted to the costs that we will have. Our mill rate, I have not updated it yet. The board overview has not sat. They have not confirmed the tax rule. We do anticipate a significant reduction in our mill rate. So it's been between eight and 8.3 basically for the last several years. But the valuation of the community has now surpassed $1 billion. The increases in our expenditures are not to the amount in which the levy, the mill rate is going, would maintain. And so that, the amount that we are taxing is spread amongst the much larger pie of valuation. And so we will see the mill rate reduce. It's always important to remember is the mill rate isn't actually what determines what you pay in property taxes. It's, you know, that's a, that's a number that gets calculated after the levy has been established. The levy is what is important and how that levy is divided amongst your portion. amongst your portion of, you know, the, the pie of the value of, of the community. And so if you have a larger piece of the pie, then you bear a higher tax burden. So, and in terms of the revaluation, a property that went up more than the average increase, which for residential properties was around 60%, you may see a small increase. If your increase was less than 60%, you may see a small decrease. But the amount that we're increasing our total levy by is not a, a huge amount. Certainly, our operating levy is not, our debt levy has gone up. The, the debt levy is what pays the principal and interest payments for loans that you've already taken out. So, it's not, it's not impacted by like the capital budget that you're approving for next year because the principal and interest payments on that debt won't start until the following year on that borrow. And so, the debt service levy is what we levy to pay the principal and interest of outstanding long-term debt. You can see the breakdown by general fund category. Largest by a significant amount is public safety. That's gonna be consistent across municipalities throughout the state. 24/7 services are expensive. It's all tied up in personnel. And it is gonna consistently be the, the highest amount that we spend, which is gonna be followed by, usually by public works, but here we do have conservation, or sorry, the health and human services. That is largely, did I mess up that color there? I did. General government, there we go. General government and public works are similar and make up the, the bulk of the remainder with the rest spread amongst other smaller functions of, of the city. The second page gives you some draft budget highlights. You will see that in contemplation of the levy limit restrictions, restrictions, the budget is largely gonna focus on maintaining service levels. You're not seeing a significant programmatic increase. You're not seeing staff increases. You're seeing us trying to maintain what it is. And then you'll also see that there are strategic allocations and to one-time expenditures, which can be eliminated in future years. This is to prepare for losses of revenue in future years while still accomplishing some of the goals that I'm aware of that, that the city council has. Some of that is gonna be, so there's some budget for tree trimming and removal. There's been, obviously we had a long conversation on it. There is a, a kind of optimal rotation on it. We have limited staff to be able to manage that. And so this would be a contract to supplement our staff's efforts and, and help them gain some ground on, on management of the urban forest. I did include a, a sum amount, $18,500 for just general Sandy Beach planning. That's gonna be reflected in Sandy Beach outside services in that fund. I don't think that would cover like a full master plan of Sandy Beach. It may help us and couple it with other resources that we may have, whether that be council contingency or other, you know, planning and engineering budgets that we have. But it does set aside some dollars dedicated towards what has been a priority of the city council, certainly more so this year, as well as perhaps following through on some of the, some additional planning on any parks board recommendations that the council may want to explore further or delve into in more detail. There's $10,000 for an update to the stormwater administrative rule. The rule is, is aging. We want to make sure that it's reflecting both the, the needs of, of the city as far as stormwater management, as well as not being unduly burdensome. So, that is something that I think we need to take a look at. And certainly, becomes more important as you look at infill development or redevelopment of, of sites that are not perhaps up to their highest and best use or blighted or have some other factor where it's not just developing a greenfield site that you're starting from scratch on. The collective bargaining agreement with the police department does have a 5% increase in there. General employee wages are budgeted at a cost of living increase of 2.5%. Consumer index, price index is 2.9% over the past 12 months. There are dollars budgeted in there as well for up to an additional 2.5% based on employee reviews. We have created a dedicated general IT budget. We did change providers in 2025. And so they have been working with us on establishing, as well as our, our kind of in-house IT employee. Dave also helps on the IT side as well as doing the cable TV side on replacement plans, identifying hardware that needs to be replaced, as well as updating some software and getting ourselves on a, a known schedule of when those renewals come up and ensuring that there's dedicated dollars to that. So, some of that came out of what had been in the, a city manager line item and is now, you know, showing that it's for IT services. We have a budgeted increase in health insurance of 10.1%. We have not received our renewal yet. So that number is still in flux. So we'll have to adjust if that comes in higher, if it comes in lower, then there may be some opportunity for additional investments throughout the budget. Revenue enhancements, the Parks Board did recommend, it has not yet come before city council. We will have to do that if the city council would like to. But the Parks Board did recommend an increase in the boat slip fees that would increase revenue by $28,000. That is included in this budget. So it is accounted for. And there is also some accounting for, of various township revenue for emergency medical services that has not been budgeted to date. So those were used to assist in balancing the budget that's been presented to you. So there are some revenues. Next is the least fun part of it all, which is the challenges we face. Levy limits are gonna always be on this list. This is a conversation I have both with community members. Certainly, I've had it with the city council over the past, but it's the, the conversation regarding growth of our community. And unfortunately, that the way that municipal funding is set up in the state of Wisconsin is that if you are not growing, you're essentially shrinking, especially from a government services perspective in that you can only increase your levy by net new construction if you're not growing, which 0.83% is teetering on that line of not growing at all. Then you really can't maintain what you're doing. It's just, you, you, you can't keep up with inflation. You can't make investments where you need to make. Most of our expenses are gonna be personnel. You have to make, be market competitive in order to, you know, retain and attract those employees. And so without even being able to increase our budget by the rate of inflation, we're greatly hampered without growth within the community. And so, whenever I speak to somebody who has concerns about growth, I, I say not wanting to grow is a perfectly valuable, viable opinion. You know, wanting to maintain what has made people love Lake Mills is certainly something that's on lots of people's minds. And that small-town atmosphere is certainly something that has attracted people to Lake Mills. But there are consequences to not growing. And that is an ever shrinking amount of government services and spreading that cost among the same people without allaying any of that. So you're gonna pay more for fewer services eventually if growth does not occur. We do have some upcoming revenue reductions that are, that we are aware of as we continue on. So we do have approximately $90,000 in revenue that will be lost in 2027 when B-level is decommissioned. We are anticipating $84,000 in reduced revenue when the COPS grant expires in 2028. So those are things that we are going to need to plan for as we budget for those years, which is why you see a lot of the, of the, of, a significant amount of money new, that you see new in the budget is dedicated towards one-time expenditures so that we can more easily stop doing what those are dedicated towards and allocate them towards operations. Health insurance costs are always on our mind. They are increasing significantly. Municipalities are seeing it everywhere. We continue to look at new providers and different ways of, of providing a competitive health insurance plan. So that's something we're always going to, to need to keep an eye on is how to manage those costs as, as best as possible and what strategies we need to adopt in order to ensure that we can continue to budget for those expenses. This is a new one, the expenditure restraint program. The expenditure restraint program is a grant from the state of Wisconsin. They provide it to employ, to municipalities that increase their general fund expenditures less than a certain percentage that they put out annually. One of the criteria for qualifying for the expenditure restraint grant program is a mill rate of five or more. With the increase in the valuation of the community and the subsequent lack of increase in government expenditures, we will see how close we are to that five mills. When you look at a 60% increase in valuation, if you don't increase your levy at all, which we did increase, we are increasing our levy, you could look at what, a 40% decrease in your, in your mill rate, which is gonna put us close to that five mills. The only solution we would have if we fell below five mills is to increase our debt service levy. So we could essentially, it's a perverse incentive from the state of Wisconsin. And so, they allow you, they cannot control what this city can borrow. You have a constitutional protected right to borrow a certain amount of money based on your equalized value. And you are, you are, you are entitled to collect taxes to pay the principal and interest on that debt that you take. So you can levy more for debt service, make larger payments, make extra payments where possible, and essentially raise your mill rate on the debt service levy. And that may be something that we want to consider because $100,000 in revenue is not an insignificant amount of our operating budget. And that would be a difficult thing to simply just absorb. Now, you can get back in, right? You lose it for one year, you can get back in the next year. But there would be hardship. And it's a two-year lag. So we would know ahead of time if we weren't gonna qualify for it based on the mill rate because we'll know what our mill rate was. So if we fell below five, chose to take no action, stayed below five, two years later is when we're not going to receive that expenditure restraint. So, I'm not sure if it'll be an issue yet, but it's something we haven't had to grapple with because we haven't really been close to five mills. But with a, with a community that is rapidly increasing in value, but net value increase is not necessarily attributable to net new construction, but rather due to appreciation of existing property within the city, that is, that could cause us difficulty in the future. And then finally, staffing. Some of this is a carryover, but grounds and facilities, public works, the library, there's certainly continuing on staff levels that they have for many, many years. We, they've had, over those years, they've had additional responsibilities added, additional infrastructure to maintain added, additional programs to manage, additional population to serve. It's a challenge, but it's also not something that at this point in time we can remedy because we simply are not, we simply don't have the capacity to increase our, our budget to the amount to add a staff member. You know, we are able to do so in the police department largely because we're able to plan for the loss in revenue and build that up over a number of years. Whereas, if you're starting with nothing from zero and you have to find $100,000 to add a position, which round numbers is, you know, what it may take, we're just not in a position to expand our services in that manner. And so, you know, these are not challenges that are unique to the city of Lake Mills. This is, this is a largely a, a product of the regulations that are before us. We don't, we don't set our budget and our levy based on needs. It's largely based on a cap placed on us by the state of Wisconsin. We have to deal with those regulations that we live under, but those, that is, that is why when I talk about net new construction and talk about, you know, growth, that a continual, continuing at a low net new construction for a significant number of years or even multiple years in a row will cause service reductions in the city's budget. That is, it's largely unavoidable. And so, we are financially strong. We have a balanced budget. We're required to have a, a balanced budget. We, our, our debt capacity is very strong. That's also a benefit of the valuation increasing. I, we're probably below 41% now. We are at 41% of debt capacity as of, you know, when I had last checked with our financial advisor. We'll see what we're at once the valuation is finalized. We still don't have manufacturing numbers for this year, which is gonna increase the valuation even more than what it's at currently. So I think that there's, there are things to be happy about and excited about in this budget. We continued, we, we provide a lot of services and we're going to continue to be able to provide a lot of services under this budget. But we do need to be aware of the reductions in revenue and the restrictions that are placed on us as, as we go into future years. And that if growth doesn't materialize, there will be some difficult conversations that'll need to be had in the future.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Drake. And if you could, this is an excellent memorandum. The graphs and the, the summary are really helpful. So if you can post that when you get a chance to grant it, because I think it'd be great for our citizens to see that. So, our final agenda item is announcements and recommendations for future agendas. So we will need a budget work session. So hopefully Misty can send out a poll or, or Drake to suggest dates that we could do a budget work session, probably sometime in October. And then this is our performance review season. So just a reminder, if you haven't already sent your individual review to Mary, please do that as soon as possible. So, at our next council meeting, we'll have a closed session as a council to discuss our review. And then a special meeting on October 27th to actually meet with Drake. Hopefully that date worked for everybody. I ask you to let Misty know if it doesn't or let, you know, and let her know when you can meet. So October 27th is the special meeting to do the performance review. Let's see, we had some second readings tonight. Those will go to third readings. They actually introduce the budget and the, or have the budget ordinance and, and utility ordinance will be coming up. Anything else that we need to be aware of?
Not at the top of my head right now.
Council members, any other comments or concerns? Okay, seeing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.